Good evening. This is the, we are starting tonight with the calling to order the school choice open public hearing. School choice is an annual procedure for the Milton School Committee. Milton is currently not a school choice district and Assistant Superintendent Catherine Blake will be going over a brief overview of school choice.
Good evening, everyone. So there is just a brief presentation that I'm going to walk through, which will provide some background on the school choice program. So Mass General Law details the terms and conditions of inter-district school choice. That's the name of the program. And the Milton School Committee has a policy, Policy JFBB regarding school choice, and there is a copy of that policy in the paper for tonight's meeting. The inter-district school choice program allows a parent or guardian to enroll their child in a school district that is not the child's home school district. So a school district in a different community than the one that that family resides in. Prior to declaring themselves a school choice district with the state, the school district needs to determine how many seats are available to offer and at what grades they would be available. So if you offer a school choice, you do not have to offer it for all grades. You can offer it for a select number of grades. Each year, the committee must vote on whether or not to participate in the school choice program, and that vote must be submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education prior to June 1, 2025. So the results of that vote, we have to report that to the state by June 1. If that committee were to vote to participate in school choice, a student enrolled in Milton Public Schools through this program would have the right to remain in the system until graduation. So if we opened up school choice in grades seven, eight, and nine, that student would have the opportunity to stay in Milton Public Schools through graduation. Historically, the Milton School Committee has voted not to participate in the inter-district school choice program.
Great. So we are going to open it up for public comment or questions? There isn't any? So we should just clarify that without a specific no vote, the system does become a school choice district. This vote limits, and we'll be voting in the school committee meeting, not in this session. This is just the open hearing. But the, this vote limits Milton's school population to those students who live in Milton. However, Milton residents may attend other school choice districts if there are spaces in those schools. This vote does not limit or impede any other agreements that exist in collective bargaining agreements. So, are there any questions or comments? Any public comment? Any public comment or questions on specifically school choice? Any comments on school choice?
I don't hear what you're saying. You might know a more of you. Think a little about it.
Yes. So we're just talking about school choice at this point. So if anybody in the audience has any questions specifically about school choice for the public hearing? Okay. Oops.
There are no hands online.
No hands online. Okay, great. So then, sorry. So we will close public comment and adjourn from the school choice hearing. So now call to order the regular Milton School Committee meeting at 7:10.
I think we have to take a vote to adjourn from the hearing.
Oh, do we? Sorry. All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from the school choice hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, unanimous. All right. So now we adjourn from the school choice hearing, and we are opening up the regular school committee meeting at 7:10 on May 21. Pledge of allegiance. Yep. So we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we are going to look at approving the May, the agenda. I know that there were a couple of changes. So was there, there was a change in the superintendent's report? You wanted to move the...
Yes, I would like to move the student representatives to the school committee to their presentation first. I know they have lots of things to work on this evening, schoolwork, et cetera. Thank you. Not yet. When we get to the superintendent's...
We'll let you know. Right. Great. And then the executive session, we're moving to, there will not be a vote.
Yes. So item number six on the agenda, the contract approvals. We will not actually be approving the contracts tonight. We will have the executive session to go over the updates. So I propose moving the executive session to the end of our agenda so that we can adjourn from executive session and not return since we're not taking our votes tonight. We'll be voting on the contracts on June 4. So that will be pushed down.
Okay. And then, was there a change to policy for...
It's just going to be an update. There's no first readings.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. So then we will go to public comment. So for public comment, in accordance with the school committee policy, we welcome members of the community to share their perspective with us during public comment. We've set aside up to 15 minutes for this part of the meeting, and individuals may speak for up to three minutes each. While the school committee does not respond directly to public comment, there may be opportunities for members to address issues that are raised over the course of the meeting when relevant topics are on our agenda. We strive to engage in respectful discourse during our meetings and ask that the public speakers keep that in mind, and speakers should introduce themselves for the record. And we will keep a three-minute timer so that you guys can hear, just so that you know when the time is up. So if anybody is here for public comment?
Thank you Chair Sario. I'm Joanna McCarthy, mom to a first-grade student here at Cunningham with a disability and who accesses special education services. I'm here tonight as a Milton Public School parent and as a current co-chair of Milton CPAC, which stands for Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I know that this committee is well aware, but for the viewing public, nearly one in three Milton Public School students is a student accessing special education services through either an IEP or a 504 plan. For students and families, this can feel pretty isolating, as though you may be one of the only families on this journey. Nope. Nearly one in three students, that's a lot of families. CPAC are your people. Come join a meeting and say hi. I want to take a quick opportunity to shout out the special educators and service provider staff in Milton Public Schools. They are top-notch. We families thank you for your hard work and dedication to our children each and every day. Milton CPAC is created by Massachusetts Education Laws. By statute, we are intended to be a council with a duty to advise the district on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. In different ways, as a council and as individual members, we have worked to do this with building staff and principals and with district leaders, and I'm here to ask for partnership with you, this committee, to do the very same. Tonight, I want to elevate to the school committee consistent systemic and thematic challenges we've heard and experienced as special education families. And then I want to ask you for future time for CPAC to partner with your committee, one, to discuss these further, and two, to establish a broader framework whereby we can collaborate with your committee on matters like this in the future. So first, staffing. Like probably all MPS parents, we were horrified at the extensive RIF reduction in force list, which was proposed in advance of the recent town vote to pass the operational override. Of notable concern was the large number of special education staff on that list. We were perplexed how all current IEPs and 504s of MPS students would have been met with the absence of those personnel. Thankfully, we don't have to ask that per se. Few. However, at this moment, as you look to tighten your budget and keeping your eye on prudent and responsible fiscal management, rightfully so, I hope you know that this is work I wholeheartedly support, we simply caution against the non-renewal of special education staff and positions across the district as we march forward. As parents, we have been part of thoughtful school teams in discussions about service delivery, goals, objectives, and accommodations for our children, all of which require special education staff. So two, coordination. It's evident, oh, am I done? Serious. Okay. Coordination and communication, again, topics that we'd love to address with you in the future. We do look forward to actively working with your committee, with superintendent, with Ms. Wetmore as Director of Student Services to resolve issues which the council has observed as themes, and we thank you for your time tonight and continuing to champion for our children.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I didn't see my address, too. Or just my name?
You're supposed to say your address.
Yeah.
Good evening. Zadie Rose, Mine Oak Road. Thank you all for your service on school committee, and thank you for allowing a forum for citizens to speak. In case people in attendance tonight don't know, Sarah Forte and I, as Glover School Site Council members and as educators who both hold master's degrees in education, wrote a letter to the school committee about our concerns with first-grade enrollment. In March of 2025, but certainly before that, this current kindergarten class was considered to be at capacity, with 16 kindergarten classrooms of between 22 and 25 students in each class. The needs-based budget included the addition of a 17th first-grade teacher, but the level service budget, of course, does not. I would like you to know that I wrote this letter along with Sarah in the spirit of collaboration. I want to thank Ms. Sario, Dr. Carroll, and Ms. Varghese, and both the acting and interim superintendents, Watson, Phelan last week, and for Dr. Watson and Mr. Phelan for meeting with us yesterday. I truly appreciate your time and attention. We're truly trying to find a solution so that our rising first-grade class sizes will not exceed numbers that will result in students not learning to read, write, and compute. We expressed our concerns to Dr. Watson and Mr. Phelan yesterday, but it bears repeating here. Our Milton teachers are excellent and have proven they can do more with less. However, as was stated by school committee members and both Dr. Watts and Mr. Phelan, it's essential that our English class sizes start with lower numbers. With Colicott's English numbers already at 23 and 24 students, and Cunningham's English numbers at 21, I'm wondering what your plan is for those schools. Mr. Phelan has assured me that, one, French is here to stay; two, classes will not be overloaded; and, three, classroom teachers have sufficient support for our first graders. But given that we were denied our request for a 17th first-grade teacher because of the level service budget, I'm imploring you to pay close attention to this idea of a level service budget and whether it's actually being adhered to in the coming weeks and months. I was disappointed to hear that you removed first-grade enrollment from your agenda tonight with over 250 signatures of concerned parents, as well as a few concerned Milton High School students. I was hoping that you would engage in a conversation about our concerns. Instead, we're going to hear a presentation from Dr. Watts tonight, who will share information that's already been decided, information that was decided without including your entire school committee and not within a public forum. We have the space to add a 17th first-grade teacher. There's a classroom that will sit empty. There's a master French teacher who has been at her school for over a decade who has been displaced. I understand the desire to right past wrongs in terms of budget, but our foundational literacy and numeracy skills where we want to tighten the purse strings. So questions I'm hoping you can answer, perhaps in a future meeting? What are some possible solutions to our large first-grade class sizes? Do we give English families a chance to move schools? Is 27 students in a French immersion class an acceptable number? When we, as a town, pride ourselves on school and program choice, how can we consider a 21-person waitlist for French a waitlist? And finally, can we revisit and revise our policies around class size to ensure that our learning environments are both productive for our students and sustainable for our teachers, especially in the foundational years of K-2? Thank you for your time and consideration.
I want to start off by thanking the school committee members. You guys are volunteering your time away from your families. And thank you, Dr. Watts. That was a great conversation last night, talking about all of the educational matters in Milton. So I am a parent to two young children at Glover and a school site council member at Glover. I'm also an experienced educator with almost 20 years of experience. I'm a candidate for National Board Certification in Literacy. I'm certified in Orton-Gillingham reading instruction, and I also hold four educator licenses, including an administrator license. So I speak now about two issues that are seemingly separate, and in the spirit of redundancy, following up with Zadie, these are deeply intertwined. The excessive classroom sizes in our French classrooms and the restriction of French access to over 20 currently enrolled children in our district, the program of which three current school committee members have been fortunate enough to have their children enrolled in. The current prospective classroom sizes within French programming have three out of five French classrooms with enrollments at 26 and 27. In the meantime, English enrollments are climbing, as Zadie made aware. The district argues that there are still available spots in the French programming, but if you examine them carefully, you realize that those spots are available because it would cap those classrooms at 26 or more. Normalizing these excessive sizes defies even the Massachusetts State average for first-grade classroom sizes, which is at 20 to 21. It also contradicts the collective bargaining agreement found on page seven in the contract that says that Milton, quote, "shall strive to accomplish the goal of primary classes, including kindergarten of 25 or fewer children." Adding one additional French classroom would grant access to French for all that choose. It could reduce classroom sizes in English and French nearly everywhere, and it would also keep French enrollment within the reasonable threshold at 40% of grade-one students enrolled in French. We understand that we aren't the first parents to raise these concerns about classroom size, but that conversation on change has never come to fruition, and the policy of stacking these classrooms has persisted over decades because that's what we've always done, because our teachers are fantastic, and our tier one in our French classrooms is exemplary. Families so deeply want their child to have a bilingual experience that they will hold their nose, put their kid in a classroom with 26 kids, and hope for the best. I don't know of any Milton parent that has been happy with this policy, but I do know 250 parents that would like to see change happen. So Zadie and I are asking for school committee to start the groundwork to reexamine the policies that have persisted in decades on what classroom sizes should look like in this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Katherine Conahan. I reside at 22 Frothingham Street. Thank you to Dr. Watts and the committee for having me, for listening, and for your work. I'm a mother of two children at Glover, one of whom is second-grade French, one into kindergarten on the waitlist for grade-one French immersion at Glover. I'm also a full-time graduate-level professor at a nursing school in Boston. I'm here tonight as both a mother and an educator to advocate for a discussion on class sizes in Milton, specifically the reinstatement of the second grade, of the second grade-one French immersion classroom at Glover. I urge the school committee to add this issue to a future agenda, as the email signed by over 250 community members deserves formal discussion and consideration. I was disheartened to learn through an email that my child had been placed on the waitlist due to the reduction in French immersion program to a single classroom. This change came as a surprise, especially given that there are 21 children on the waitlist, which is essentially an entire class. Like many families, I supported the recent override with the understanding that it prioritized instruction. In addition, level service means preserving what we have. Glover has had two French immersion grade-one classes since 2013. This decision not only breaks their promise to spend on instruction and keep level service, also lacks transparency and communication that Milton has publicly pledged to improve. Reinstating the second French immersion class would support the many children on the waitlist, including my own, and help alleviate the very large class sizes projected for the incoming first grade, both at Glover and across the district. Without it, we risk class sizes rising to levels not seen in over a decade. As both research and practice show, smaller class sizes are critical to effective learning, especially in elementary years. Every child in Milton deserves access to high-quality education. Restoring the second French immersion class is not just about language, it's about providing all first graders with the opportunity to learn from excellent teachers in classrooms where real learning can thrive. I respectfully request the issue of one of the largest incoming first-grade classes and the reduction of the French immersion class at Glover be placed on the agenda for the next school committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Is there anyone online?
There are no hands currently online.
Okay. Is anyone else in the audience here for public comment? No? No? All right. All right. Thank you all. So now we will move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Serene. Congratulations to our senior class at Milton High. This is a really joyful time of year, and Friday will be their last day of school. We hear, for those of us in the building, there have been multiple celebrations. There's a celebration going on this evening, and Assistant Superintendent Blake and I were treated to a group of students who came in and serenaded us at dinner. It was really, it brought us to tears. They were a group of young women, about 25 of them. They're called Pretty Sharp, and they were magnificent. We really enjoyed them. So congratulations to our seniors. Many happy days ahead for them. We wish them success and happiness as they move on, and we look forward to their graduation on June 1. In terms of district news, the district has begun the process of re-establishing residency for about 1,200 families in grades three, six, and nine. And a big shout-out to Serena Burke for the incredible work she's doing on this. It is an extensive task to do. As families know, we appreciate their patience. It may seem meticulous and challenging to get all the paperwork together, but it is a requirement that we do check this residency. So we appreciate your cooperation. If you have any difficulty, please reach out. We understood that there's been a few challenges with families not getting the appropriate emails. We have attempted to rectify that, but if you are one of those families, please let us know. We, just an update, previous superintendent Burrows had been updating us regarding the incoming kindergarten class, a little smaller than we anticipated, although the number is steadily creeping up. Currently, we have 312 students and already documented as providing all the necessary residency information. Again, thank you to Serena Burke, because she did all of those independently. And we have about eight additional in the queue, so we are guaranteed to have 320 students probably by June. And over the summer, traditionally, historically, our data has shown we'd expect approximately 20 more. You never know. Depends on the housing market, too, I assume. So that could get us close to a number of about 340. And you may be wondering, where did we start last year? I asked for that information, and last year we started at 359. So we're creeping pretty close to that number, which was also a very large class. And as some of our public comment has noted, Superintendent Phelan and myself have spent some time meeting and working with families from the Glover School who have questions about how the French immersion program choice has gone, as there is a change in families' choice of where the programs are offered. And we are offering five sections of French immersion next year, two of them that next year will be at the Colicott School, one at Tucker, one at Glover, and one at Cunningham, which is a change from previous years. Program has traditionally, for the last 10 years, fluctuated between five and six sections at different schools. We can talk about this another evening, too, when we have a formal presentation on it. But I do want to also indicate that the district remains very committed to French. It is a really important part of our program. People move here to participate, and as Xena Hamada would say, language competency is so important to global citizenship, and we know that's an important value. French immersion is not going away for the parents who are worried about that, and we are grateful for the staff who teach in that program. We have some students here today who are going to summarize the work that they have done this year, the representatives. So if you'd like to come on up to the table, we'd appreciate that. If people have questions about anything...
Yeah. Do we have any... Yeah. Do we have any questions at first about anything that Regina has shared? Do we want to pause this?
Yeah. Okay. So I'm sorry.
Can we just pause for two minutes? We're just going to open it up to discussion in the group, and then Regina sit down. Okay? Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Are there questions or comments?
No. So are you going to share the enrollment data or no? Or is that kind of the update?
So the update was just the number of sections. We weren't sharing...
Okay. I didn't know if there was anything further than that that's going to be shared. Okay. So I do have, obviously, some of the concerns that were raised at Citizens' public comment I also share. Having gone through the program with both my daughters, it is a very special program, and I understand I really am concerned about the large class sizes. Absolutely. I think I don't know how those teachers manage such large class sizes and provide the results that they do. And as the speaker on special education stated, like, all of these kind of go hand-in-hand. And so they are absolutely connected to each other, and providing students the opportunity to have the supports and making those class sizes smaller wherever we can is absolutely crucial to their learning, especially learning a foreign language, and making sure that those students in those large class sizes are successful. The other thing, too, is I understand that we have a packed agenda, but I did request this on the agenda for today, and I am disappointed with the way it was handled. And, you know, in the past, when we've put things on the agenda, and once it's confirmed that it's on the agenda, we do take the time to discuss it, but this one was handled slightly differently, and it could have been handled differently and better. But this one was handled slightly differently, and it could have been handled differently and better. And it is a little disappointing the way it was, just to be honest. So I hope, I hope that we can bring this up at our next meeting and give it the attention that it needs, because every family that I've been on school committee for four years, this is my fourth year, and every time families make requests, those requests are all important. Every speaker that comes to our table is important, and I really try so hard to place myself in their shoes and to understand it from their perspective. You know, I appreciated the comments from all four speakers tonight, and I do, I really do value that. And if I cannot understand where they're coming from and help them through it in my position as a school committee member, then I shouldn't be sitting here. So I really, really commend you all for speaking up for what you believe and advocating not only for your own kids, but for every other student. And so I would like to bring this up at a future meeting and discuss this further and see what we can do, right? We really, it's important for all of our parents, all of our students that come to our buildings. Let's figure it out, and that's all I'm asking for. Let's have that discussion, let's learn from each other. And if we end up where we are today with the five classes, then that's fine, but I want an opportunity to discuss it. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
And I'd just like, yeah, I'd just like to say, I mean, I just want to acknowledge, I appreciate what you just said, Anna. Appreciate all the comments from the parents who have showed up. I have a second grader who's in a twenty-six student French class. Yeah, it's not ideal, that's for sure. I think it's in the context of a lot of, like, other tensions that we grapple with. And that doesn't take away from the challenge that individual students, teachers, and families feel. So to me, it's not like an either-or thing. It's living within the limitations that we have as a district that spends so far below the average per student, thirtieth percentile in the state. So obviously, we're going to be above average in our class size. I mean, this is a tension that we continually grapple with. And, you know, especially now that we've passed the override and we will be living within the means of this budget that we have for the foreseeable future. So yes, it will continue to be a challenge that we have to grapple with. I, too, just sincerely appreciate the thoughtful sort of advocacy of these families, families on any number of issues over my years on school committee who earnestly come to us and, you know, ask for something that they're not currently receiving. And, you know, yes, I agree, we're gonna look at this seriously. It's, you know, going to be in the context of a number of things that Mr. Phelan is coming in to help us kind of try to get a handle on. And, you know, I just, I just recognize the complexities of the questions that are being raised in that, you know, there isn't a simple fix to it, and there's not, it's not as easy to add, like, one section into a level service budget. So that, you know, in the context of what was shared around the challenges with our special education staffing, that's just one example of sort of the implications of any single decision around adding or reducing staff. And I just would like for us to stop referencing the reduction to the French program, because the district-wide French program has not been reduced from this year to next year. And so I think it's just also important that we can stay accurate in describing sort of what is actually happening. A classroom has been reallocated from one school to another, and that in and of itself is a serious change that needed better change management, like, that is clear. And people needed more sort of clarity and compassion in understanding the change and where it was coming from. And, you know, we see that, and we need to, we need to address that for sure. So yes, I'm sure we'll continue to talk about it going forward. It will be good to have the information. I think it's so important that we can, you know, we're so caught up in sort of our lived experience and any of us, you know, we know what we have in front of us in terms of, like, what has happened in my kid's school during the time that I've been here and the recent memory of the families with older kids that have been there, you know. But as we look back and recognize that the, if the program has ebbed and flowed from five to six classrooms over time, you know, let's understand what's happening now in the context. And so that's what I hope we can better continue to do as we have a future discussion about it.
Right, and I think that, that, all that information, we haven't discussed, and it hasn't really been shared among the school committee members, so it's really hard for us to, like, you know, even hearing you guys speak and not be able to, without everybody at this table having the same amount of information. I've been on a call the other day, but like, really just understanding, you know, all of those complexities that we just have to deal with, right? Budget, all of these things, and looking at the data, like, if there has only been five classes in the past, like, when did, when did it go from six classes to five classes, or has it gone up from five classes to six? Like, we're not looking at any of that data, like, none of that has been presented. And I know I shared, asked you some questions that I'm waiting on answers for, so I think it would be really helpful. So I think, you know, at a future discussion, like, hopefully the next school committee meeting, it would be helpful to have all of that information. And if we land exactly where we are today, then that's great, but I just want to be able to give it the due diligence of having that discussion.
And if I can just, yeah, and if I can just clarify, so there was the request for this to be on the agenda. We also had town meeting, and we missed a meeting. And so there were two presentations, one which previously for people had been very timely, which was a presentation from special education, about special education, and then we have a number of votes. So this was not a matter of it not being a priority. I do think for a number of people, there are questions about it, but I think in order for the conversation also to be productive, that it, that the whole school committee has the opportunity to similarly ask questions if there's, if there's information. Are there questions about policy? Are there questions about enrollment? So that when we come together to talk about it, that we are representing everybody's questions and we're getting the data that's needed. And I think it's also just, you know, as we move forward and do it, it, you know, historically, French immersion has been called the third rail, right? People, it's, it has been a difficult conversation for people in some, in some ways. So I think being able to talk about it and ask questions in a way that, if people just are looking for information and understanding context and understanding policy, that everybody's coming in with that, understanding that it's about information gathering, it's not anything else. So there's a lot of things I don't know about French immersion. There are a lot of things I've learned in a week about the policy. So I think if we all agree that this, you know, we putting it on the agenda and then having the opportunity for everybody to reach out and share, you know, what's the information that they're looking to have so that it is a productive conversation, I think that that is, would be a good use of time, if that's what you're going for. So, thank you. Is there anybody else? Questions, comments? No?
I appreciate your comments, Anna, and understand where you're coming from. And I do think that we have tried to respectfully respond to parents as they have reached out to us on this, but we have not had communication with all school committee members. So I understand that frustration, and we will work on that. I think data is emerging, too, and that we, you know, Superintendent Phelan and I are committed to watching and continuing this conversation as well as looking historically. And it has been a source of balance and tension, as we say, to keep the quality of the program strong. And we have been pretty successful at that, but it has come with challenges also. So I think we continue to work and struggle on that and are committed to it.
And I think also to get to a point where, I know it has come up previously, like, talking to parents with high school kids, like, every few years this comes up as an issue, right? Like, and so I would like to kind of solve for that, so it's no longer a concern for people, like, will it go away? Will it stay? You know, it's there, it's something that we offer. We offer the English Innovation Pathway, and we offer French immersion, and they're both equally strong. And that's something where I would like to get to, so that it is something that Milton's Public Schools stands behind, and we don't have to make statements like, "We're here to make sure that French isn't going away." Like, that should never be a concern anymore for families. So I think that's what I would really like for us, you know, especially with Superintendent Phelan coming in and his institutional knowledge on both, both tracks, I think it would be really beneficial so that it is something that Milton Public Schools proudly stands behind, both programs, and they're equally robust and equally well-done.
Right, and in meeting yesterday with Zadie Rose and Sarah Forte, they mentioned, too, that the worrying concern of families about the future of the program. And, you know, they urged me to say that it, the commitment of the district towards it, and the district is absolutely committed to having a quality French immersion program for families. And I don't want people to worry about that. And I know that Superintendent Phelan feels the same way.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. And I understand you did submit some questions this afternoon, and I actually just started to look at some of the data, so we will get you that information.
Yeah, and I think, I think it would be really helpful, even for when we talk about this, to include all of the, you know, like, the data, like Amanda mentioned, you know, questions that school committee members will have. I know usually when we discuss stuff, questions kind of arise on the fly, but to your point, if questions can be submitted to make sure, does it show all of this information so that we all have a great understanding of it? And I've said this before, like, my kids went through the program. I don't even know if I have a strong understanding of what French immersion truly is. And I think it's really important as school committee members for us to really be knowledgeable in what this program is. And I think that will really help us, too, to continue to ensure that all the programs that we offer at Milton Public Schools are really strong. So, and that we are committed to it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So you just want to come up now?
So students, sorry, thank you for your patience. So we have two students who will introduce themselves in a moment, who've been working with a team of students under the direction of school committee member Bow, and today they're...
Well, under the advice of Dr. Conaty at the high school.
So my name is Sydney Burns, and I'm a senior.
And I'm Olivia Wolfson, and I represent the sophomores.
So for summary today, we're just going to go through a few quick things. The summary of what we've done this year, what we want to do next year within our role, and then a larger summary of Student Gov at the high school and our goals for Student Gov. So in regards to what we did this year, it was a little bit, little bit funky just because of everything that's played out since January. But we met monthly with the superintendent and school committee rep Chi. Even when Superintendent Burrows left, we were still meeting with Bow, I believe, last April. And so with these meetings, we discussed the calendar, obviously, which was a lot earlier in the year, phones back when that was kind of a bigger issue, and we talked about surveys. And then finally, we talked about budget. So we more so talked about what the budget would look like, what the issue was, because honestly, as students, and I think the wider community can say that we were just unsure initially, just due to the kind of lack of transparency at the start. And so we just discussed that with committee member Bow. And then in regards to next year, we, as the school committee representatives, are still, obviously, would like to be involved with the issue with school phones and any important issue that arises. And then we would also just support the new superintendent as the, as school committee reps and hopefully would like to continue our monthly meetings.
At Student Gov, we've had a really, a really exciting year. We've had a lot of opportunities to kind of, like, get our community involved, even when things were a little insane. So at the beginning of the year, we had our pep rally that we always do, that was really fun. Our big fundraising event this year was the Wizards game that we had, the basketball game. That was really, that was really fun, and we raised, like, eleven thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was a large amount.
And then as we've gotten into this kind of May-June time period, we've had, we have our spring fling coming up. We've had spirit weeks, award nights, and then, of course, graduation. And one thing that we're really excited about this year is that we've raised enough money for caps and gowns to be completely free, so students don't actually have to pay for that. And that's something we're, we're looking to do next year as well. And even with, like, prom tickets, all that stuff, we're looking to see if we can do a little more fundraising and kind of alleviate costs on our students. And we're also looking at, with these fundraisers, if there's ways, like, around the holidays that we can raise money, but also for, like, local charities and stuff and kind of make impact in the greater community. So, yeah, as Student Gov, we've had a really good year, and as school committee representatives, we're excited to do more good stuff next year.
Okay, so that's our little spiel.
Coming into the year wrap.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
So you had developed the survey, or you were working on the survey about the phone policy for students. Is that something you're still planning to pursue next year?
For sure, it just, we felt like, I don't know if tone deaf is the right word, but it was just, when it got finished, it was at the same time the override kind of hit its peak, and everyone was, and we were just like, first of all, people aren't going to respond to it because they're all upset, and I just, I don't, it'll definitely be sent out next year. It's completely done, and we're ready to send it out. It was just a matter of, like, timing and just kind of what felt acceptable in that moment.
That's good to know, because, you know, for policy subcommittee, it will be probably a good conversation to have together and have student reps maybe even participating with policy somehow, if it's on the table to look at that issue, so.
It's definitely a big priority for next year's, because, you know, everywhere else is talking about it, so.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about that? So the survey, was it for, did it just go to students, or did it go to students and teachers and?
So it hasn't been sent out yet, but it will go to students, teachers.
And parents, and you can specify, like, what relation you are, and we were trying to get it released. One way would be through the principal's, like, weekly blog. She sends out, like, Principal Cahill sends out a newsletter, but obviously, it was, she was very busy, so, yeah.
But, yeah, we'll get, we'll be able to look, that's something we're actually interested in, looking at, you know, students versus teachers versus parents, to see kind of where those, where the interests lie amongst those groups, for sure.
Can you just say, for those of us who weren't around last year, what are, what are, like, the big things you're looking to learn from that survey?
We're interested in seeing, so everywhere else, they've been doing really big crackdowns on phones. It's been a really big conversation. There's been talk of, like, just full removal of phones in the, like, the yonder pouches. And we've recently done a thing, you just put your phone in a pocket before you enter class, but we're trying to see, do the teachers think that's effective? Do, are the parents happy with this? Would they be upset if we took it all away? We just want to look at what reactions might be, stuff like that.
Yeah, and also from what we understood, Superintendent Burrows was looking at, like, kind of a district-wide, like, across-school ban on cellphones. So we were looking on whether we should do something feasible like that, whether it should vary by schools, because obviously, elementary schoolers with phones is different than high schoolers, so.
Yeah, well, there's, there's been talk about the, what we've heard from students is that there's, the rules in the middle school are different than the ones in the high school. And sometimes the transition, people feel like a little uncomfortable with how bumpy that is. So we're looking at, is it, does it make sense to go district-wide, even though there is obviously differences between a kindergartner and a twelfth grader? So that's something we're interested in as well.
Is it possible for us to see a copy of the survey? I think that'd be...
Oh, we don't have it on.
No, I know you don't have it on.
Yeah, we can send it to...
Again, I think the question and the focus is a really interesting one. Again, it might be something that's forced on us with the bills that are currently in front of the state legislature that are, probably won't come up this session, but next session. But, yeah, I would love to see what, what the students, staff, families think and see that divide and just what I, I guess my interest in looking at surveys is, like, what different level of question we're asking around, like, are we asking people, is it a full ban? Do they, like, what's the, I guess, spectrum that they support, a full ban, nothing, or something in between, like a council or something like that? But that's great, and thank you for all your work on it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much for the great idea. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now I'd ask for Viveau, so, come on. V, V is our Director of Data Analysis, and I have to give her a shout out. She has been um my right hand in terms of understanding um student data and working with me as the assistant superintendent. Um and she's also available to support our principals um and our coordinators with test data. Um and she's invaluable in supporting um presentations for people when they're preparing data for you as well as other places. So um she's a behind the scenes gal, but I guarantee you, she's always working hard and has been so helpful to me. Um and one project that she has really worked on a lot is um, this is, we're opening the curtain because this is, so to speak, um this Performance Matters is an add-on to our Power School Student Information System that um she has been incredibly supportive of launching this project for us. Um we'd like to share it with you. Um we have worked with our faculty on professional development throughout the through line of the theme has been helping student, helping our staff and teachers look at students with the data lens. And they have been accessing it on this platform of Performance Matters all fall. We've been training them um at different points. And we are about to launch this for families to increase families' access in a more coordinated, easy manner to all their student data. Um as as it launches, you will see it it's um provides information. But over the years, your student is in school, that information will grow. So it's a great longitudinal data storage for you about your students. So not to steal the show from V, but um she, if you could um lead us through Performance Matters. And I think it's really one of, even though it's the second to last school committee of the year, it's really one of our bright spots. And it's been one of my goal um and V's goals to accomplish this year.
All right, thank you for that great introduction.
Well deserved too.
Hello, everyone. So as Dr. Watts has mentioned, uh we in the district have been working for a long time to build up our data capacity. And um we're happy to be able to bring this finally to families so that they can log in and be able to see for their own child, their own children, um all the data points that the district considers. Um so I'm happy to share with you what we've worked on and we'll be launching this to families tomorrow. So that's really exciting and really a great way to close out a very unexpected year. Okay, so what is Performance Matter? If you can advance the slide more. Next slide. So essentially, it's um a data warehouse and a common assessment platform that allows us to store and access students' academic and assessment data all in one centralized location. And families can go into it and look at their data for their children year after year. Um and it it will follow the students. So you know, all the MCAT scores, all those PDF or mail link reports that you get home and then you look at it and you place it somewhere and you kind of don't remember where you place it. Well, all of the overall scores are gonna be stored in this system. So families can really track how their students are growing and learning year over year. Um so the the platform itself will include a wide range of data, both from the state level but also from the district levels. So there are, there are data that we can pull straight from the Power School system, um grades, attendance, scheduling. Um but we can also upload other data, so things that we haven't been able to provide to families as readily available. So DIBELS, I Ready, um AP score, SAT score, access scores, all that is gonna be included in this system. Educators, as Dr. Watts has mentioned, have been given access to this system this whole year. So they're able to go in and pull up any of these data points for all students that they have access to, which um is really great because now instead of wasting time navigating different system, trying to get different system um data point from this system, it's all in one place, really easy to access for teachers. And we are hoping for families as well. Um and I think the the other big thing is that, you know, it provides a level of transparency to families um in terms of how their students are making progress on a lot of these standardized um assessment data. So in addition to, you know, homework assignment, quizzes, tests, grading that you are already receiving uh from the educators in the district, you're gonna be able to see these standardized assessments alongside those. That should give you all a fuller perspective of how each and every one of of your students are doing. Okay, so next slide, why Performance Matter? As I said, we've been working really hard as a district for over the past decade, really, to build up uh our educators' capacity, our leaders' capacity to um analyze, use, and make decisions based on data. You know, we're looking at both qualitative and quantitative data. It's really great to hear these students saying that they are gonna be collecting survey data from their peers because that is some of the practices that we're all trying to build up. That you're not only looking at, you know, these numbers and test scores, but also these qualitative surveys about what students think, what teachers think, and what families think. So that's something that we're still uh developing our capacity to do on a district-wide scale. But I'm really glad that these students are already, you know, thinking and pushing forward on some of these um relevant issues that uh that are appearing in education today. Um so some of the things that we've done with teachers, common planning time, we've done data-wise training for school leaders. And as Dr. Watts mentioned, this year's theme for PD is really how do we understand our students?
Hold on one second, it might be off air. Can y'all hear us in there? Cameras are
This camera off.
It's a red light.
The ground is back there.
It's there.
The lights in the
No, that's probably, that's probably because the um kids are doing whatever their audition is across the way. Turn their lights off there because this is all wired together.
Yeah, the projector turned off and all the cameras turned off.
We're just gonna have to work with it because it's safe. I don't know why it if that turns off, it's because the people that are in the off recording, where it all their stuff off.
Are are we still meeting? I guess my question would be, are we still meeting public? We're recording it and we can still
So it's still, Zoom is still on, it's like audio wise, still heard.
But no video.
Sorry.
So we're pausing, there we go.
So well
Just a minute.
She's going. V, do you want to keep?
Should we keep talking while Mark tries to get it back up or?
Yeah.
Sure, sure. Um okay, um so as I was saying, we're building up a data culture in the district. Um and this really dovetail with that objective. Um the second thing is why Performance Matter? We really wanna engage parents more deeply in their children's learning. And we think that this is an opportunity for families to uh connect and see exactly what's happening with their students and be able to engage with their teachers, their school leaders, um if they have any concerns or if they, you know, um have any other ideas about how their children might best be learning in a classroom. Um and then thirdly, it's been uh uh we basically have to stage it to make sure that we're building the right data infrastructure to uh be stable for the future. So last year, we transitioned the whole district to Power School. And that was changing our entire system away from a 20-year-old system that we used previously. So it took a lot of um manpower and work behind the scene to get that up and running for everybody, to train teachers, to redo our all our processes. And we feel like we are humming along this year. And so we're able to add on this other component, which is Performance Matter. And that is um putting on the the learning lens for uh the system and really getting everybody to connect to um the data that's underlying all the learning processes that we have in the district. Okay? And then next slide, so Performance Matter Portal. These are all the different things that you'll be able to see on the portal. So like I said before, some scheduling, attendance, grade. Um we're gonna have assessments where teachers can manually enter in the data. So a lot of our, some of our assessments are not um are not necessarily online assessments. So where teachers have to grade them manually and we're able to put that into the system. Whereas before, you know, they lie in spreadsheets, in teacher's gradebook, everywhere. And so this is a a great way to pull everything together and have consistency in one system. Um like I mentioned before, MCAT scores will be on there and additional assessments, I Ready, Math, DIBELS, PSAT, SAT, AP, that's all gonna be on the system. So next slide. So this is kind of the interface of what it's gonna look like. And as you can see, those are all the different tabs that I just mentioned, circle in red. And you'll be able to see that when you log in. So so next slide. Um these are some of the tools that we have developed for families. Uh there will be um a short video presentation that takes you through what it looks like. Tomorrow, we're gonna be sending out the login information letter for family. And that will also include an FAQ sheets to answer some questions that family might have. And will also include a glossary that our curriculum team have put together to give more context and explanation on what, on what some of these assessments are that family will see. And then lastly, so these are some of the supports that we will be building out um for families in the district. So if families have difficulties with access and login, we're gonna ask you to contact first your school main office um because they will have to set up the emails that you use with Power School to get you into Performance Matter. Uh next week, I'll be hosting office hours at each of our school just to give any additional support to families who might want a little bit more um in-person support to log in. Um any glitches or errors on the Performance Matter platform? I'm gonna ask people to contact me directly and I'll be working with Performance Matter to iron out those issues. And then um the meetup at all, if families, parents have questions about individual student performance, we're asking everyone to reach out first to your teachers at the school um and then school leaders before reaching out to um any potential curriculum directors or coordinators. So you know, students' learning is a really a team effort and it takes people at all level um to understand really uh what is going on with uh your child and your situation. So this is kind of the the hierarchy of help that we're proposing that family follow. Okay, and and then last slide, I'm letting everyone know again that we're gonna launch this tomorrow. Um the platform will be live. We've been sharing communication with our staff. And um after we send out the letter to the families tomorrow, it will also live in the principal's uh weekly newsletters as well as the MPS website. So it's really exciting. Like I said before, this is really a combination of years of um just building up our data culture, of speaking with families and families asking um how they can access more data on their students. And so we're really glad to be able to bring everything to fruition and, you know, uh offer this to family tomorrow.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions? Comments?
Yeah, I I do, I think this is great. So my first question, so if you already have Power School, this is something new that you have to log into or does it automatically up?
Um so this, yeah, we we wish that it could do that. But it is um another portal, another like website that you do have to log into. But it uses the same email that you use to log into your Power School account.
And it still works as an app that shows, because I get alerts on my phone when my daughter's grade gets updated. So you'll get alerts like that similarly or no?
No, this doesn't have a a mobile app yet.
Okay.
So you do have to go to the the website to to see all the data.
Okay, okay. Um and then I just, I do have to say, I really appreciate um where um we are recognizing the need uh partner with families. I think that's been a huge concern, I would say, like since post-COVID, like just for families to like kind of know what students are doing. I think having students, kids at home during COVID and families kind of helping with their learning. And then once they went back to school, I think more families wanted to stay engaged in that process. So I think this kind of brings all of that together. So I really appreciate the direction that this is going in. And uh this level of data is 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 so, so important. So I appreciate that and I think this will be phenomenal. So thank you for all the work that you are doing. Um and then I just had a question, though, um on the um the bullet point about supporting, supports educators and personalized instruction using data insights. Could you kind of explain a little bit more on that?
Yeah, so like I said before, when teachers log into the platform now, they are able to see the individual student data for each of the students in the classroom. So before, it was really hard um to necessarily see if you have like student in different section, if you see the data broken down by this group of students, so that group of students. So now on this platform, teachers can go in and create smaller groups of students that they wanna pull. So you know, if there are certain students who may be, um I don't know, taking a a quiz or or tests on an assignment and they are not um getting a a certain question right, then the the teacher can pull just that group of students and look at their data and and strategize ways to help just that smaller groups of students. And you can, you know, assign um different tasks for different groups of students to do based on the data breakdown that you see. So it's a way to help teacher kind of manage these differentiation strategies and um be able to target their learning specifically for smaller groups of students or even in individual students based on that data.
Thank you. So teachers obviously have access to a larger group of students than you have access to your individual students. And you know, if you're a first grade parent logging in, there's not gonna be a lot of information yet. But as the years go on, it's there to log on and it grows and grows and grows. So remember when you can't remember what, how they did in third grade on their ELAMCATs? Well, you can look it up when they're in ninth grade, it will be right there.
Oh, so it will, can, it wouldn't just be for that current year.
That's good. Students, um for some of the data that you would have to try to dig out of a filing cabinet somewhere.
Yeah.
So it's a data storage piece too. And 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 we are, just want to say out loud too, one of the most common errors that um the company reports that families, the challenge they have is that, um you know how we all have different emails? You must use the same email you're You must use the same email you're using for Power School. So people over time change their emails. So if you're having trouble logging on, it's very simple to do, but it's more than likely because you're using a different email. So we've told all of this administrative assistants at the school. The first question is, check out what email they're using online for Power School, make sure they're using the same one. Hopefully, that will solve about ninety percent of the problems. But V is making herself available in schools on site as we launch this next week. We're, we're launching it tomorrow, but she'll be available for people, so they have a little bit of time to look at that. And we greatly appreciate the hands-on help for families, too.
And so does the existing Power School kind of phase out? Is that what happens?
It'll still be there. So that's, you can still get that on your mobile app. So this will have additional information, and it's on one place.
I have a couple of questions. If that's okay. V, it's great to meet you. I've seen your name on MPS Data Things for years. So really respect the work that you do. Just on the point of there's longitudinal data, will there be historical data sort of retrospectively put into the system? Like, my daughter is now in sixth grade, or her third grade, whatever results be in there.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't do that, so we just have to start. So I started putting in the data last year when we got the Power School system. So we have data basically starting from last year. And every year, as we put in more data, the system will keep it, but we can't go back. Because it, it just, it's, there's not a way. To do that easily.
And then, how does, it seems like there's a lot of different assessments that are gonna be, have data in here. How does the data actually get into Power School? Is it like a, a feed, or is it manually entered?
It depends. So if Power School has a partnership with a company, so for example, they have a partnership with, with I Ready, then the data from I Ready will get imported in automatically every time they take the assessments. So like three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. So after the administration, it'll directly flow into the system for other assessments, like DIBELS. That's something that I have to pull at the district level and then upload it into the system via their tool.
Like a mass upload of data?
Right.
I was just trying to think about the administrative burden of using it. And then, I'm curious how, if at all, this, this platform is impacting like your, your, or the district's broader data strategy? Like, does this enable you to approach the analysis that you do? Or the tools that you give teachers or, or school leaders? Does it allow you to do something different?
Yes, absolutely. It makes it more efficient. It cuts out a lot of the time that I would otherwise spend trying to just combine different sources of data. So right now, if I go into the system and you wanna know, simple question, like how many students on IEP have this level of performance on like a certain English class or a certain assessment? Like, that's now much more easily being able to pull out from the system than before where everything was manual. And especially for teachers, I think this is a huge win. Because it's combining all the data into columns for them that are easy to follow. You know, where before they would have to log into another system, I Ready system. I mean, sometime they still might have to do that to get more detailed level analysis or just specific questions. But if you're just going for an overall look at trend data, at a pattern of how is my group of students doing on this particular assessment? And I just wanna see high-level, you know, green, yellow, red, it's color-coded in the system, too. Then you'll be able to pull up that report and you'll see, okay, fifty percent of my students are in green. You know, thirty percent are still in yellow. Like, maybe I wanna dig into that thirty percent. I wanna make that into a small group and dig further into the data. That's something that teachers definitely did not have the capacity to do before. And having this system really helps to pull all of that together. So definitely time efficiency and ability to easily join different data set and look at it, you know, under different demographics. So we really wanna know how a certain student groups is performing on this assessment versus another group of, another peer group. Then we can easily do that in a system versus doing everything manually by hand before. So it's a great tool.
That's great.
Would, would parents be able to have that levels of access as well? To compare, like, how is my kid's doing compared to the whole class, compared to the whole grade, compared to the whole district?
Yeah, that would be something awesome to have, unfortunately. I think the data that parents can see are really just their own individual students. And it's really the overall data. There's no graphic, like, I feel like that would be the next level of a data system, you know? And there are many different data systems out there. But we really have to be careful about what we prioritize because not all data system would necessarily speak with our student information system. And one of the, the major selling point of this system is that it connects directly to Power School. So all the demographic information that's already in Power School is transferred to this platform versus we would have to doing the manual load of populating all these different system with our student information so that it can do the work that it does.
Ethan had mentioned IEPs. So for this, if you're doing, say there are evaluations or things that are done for an IEP. So some of it would be like DIBELS and I Ready, but if there are other things, are those evaluations, are those able to be put into the system as well? So say there's, that, that's, you know, that's testing, but like a WISK or a Wyatt or any of those that might have been done with the school psychologist or anybody, or the speech therapist? Are those able to be in there for the parents whose students are on an IEP? So you can compare, you know, if they're every three years?
I think there's definitely capacity, like capability, rather, to do that in the system. I think we would still have to figure out as a district, like what evaluation or what assessment we want to put in there and how do we want it to go in there? So for some, teachers will, will have to manually enter. For others, like something like a standardized assessment, we can mass upload the results. So it really depends on the type of data and what we wanna go into the system as a district.
I guess similarly, there's, you know, there's a place for, on the slide, it talks about observational results. So similarly, if there are things where, again, I'm like looking, talking about maybe with an IEP, but if there's data that they're collecting observationally, that it's a place where, you know, if, if, if there's data around occurrences of things or improvement or anything of those, is that a place, could that? What, I, I guess the question is, is that an opportunity for observational results to be put in there? If there's sort of like data collection going on by the teachers? And similarly, how is that used for other, like more broadly, the observational results?
So the observational result is really a tool to capture data. So as long as you are able to assign scale to the data that you're seeing, then you can put it into the system and it holds that for you. So you can say like, you can assign different scale, approaching, you know, exceeding, meeting, and then have a rubric to go with each of those scale or those labels. Then the teacher can enter in those labels into the system. And that can follow through, and it really depends on, I mean, the system is open. We can be creative about how we wanna use it. But that is actually something that, you know, the, the French program, the GB plus data, it is not as, like an online standardized assessment. It's basically a, a one-on-one reading record with, between the teacher and the student. So after the teacher does it, they would go into the system and entering a specific rating based on a rubric that they had, where they evaluated the student. And that rating is what the family would see in the system.
That's great. So could I just make the suggestion that maybe as a future look at it? Is, like, seeing if there is a way to use that as a place for those families where, who, whose students are on an IEP and where there are a lot of things where it require, you know, where there's observational data or gain, data being collected, that maybe that, that's a place where that can be informed. And then similarly, looking at some of those more standardized tests that they're taking, that they can, you know, start doing it, especially if they're being done every three years so that they have that, that history. Because I don't, I think for, I think that's probably a place where similarly, like you said, you're going back and you're like, where was that evaluation that we had done three years ago and what was the data? But if they, if we begin collecting it there, I think that that's a great opportunity for families to have a viewpoint into their students that they might not other have, otherwise have as easily. That would be great.
So the only comment I would say about that, that I have is, most of the data that is in there is data that's commonly administered to all students. And as you know, specialized in, specialized, special education evaluation or specialized to the student requires additional signed parent consent. So given that multiple people over the years in a student's history would have access to it, we'd have to assure that there was security around who would have access to those reports. Because even there, there's, as you know, specific regulations about test reports, who has access to them. They're in a different folder, they're not in a student's cumulative folder. So some classroom testing results, like the GB plus, or even if we do common assessments, we move towards those. Those are very easily integrated into that. I think it's, it, we would have to think very carefully about the security and the regulations around special ed testing on that piece. But I'm sure that we're moving in that direction because everything will be digitally stored. And it's wonderful to be at the forefront of that, so.
Yeah, I don't mean to go down such a narrow path, but it just seems like such a great opportunity for families. Just, thank you. Yeah, no, no, I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, there are other, there's a special education platform within Power School. Right? Power School has got, it's a hub and it's got a bunch of different spokes with different, Performance Matters is one. It has special education, other parent communication tools, other things like that that can be added on. Which might, I think the point is, right, the, the great thing I like about this is the, what you mentioned, Anna, which is like just the access to data that families have, the insight they have with ease on an online platform without having to call, ask for paperwork, waiting for kind of the reports to be generated, saving you all time from, you know, doing manual emails or mail merges or things like that. And just like, it just feels really easily accessible for families. And so being able to do something like that for something like special education, again, whether that's through the Power School app or something else, I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe we'll, we can talk about it in the special education report, but just like the platform that it uses for that is, is interesting. I, just to comment on a couple of things other folks said, I really like your point, Val, of like just the context of the data. I guess, just to continue on that, like if you're reporting the DIBELS, when we get the DIBELS reports, right, it shows what my child's score is in these different categories. It shows where that is on kind of a range and what that range means. And so it just provides additional context. If I'm looking at Performance Matters, it's probably just gonna tell me she got a hundred or whatever, you know, whatever. I can't remember what the scale is on the DIBELS. But it's probably just giving me that number, right, and not putting that number into context. So I think that's just.
So that's why we developed the glossary to help families understand what the different ranges are, what the different colorings are, and additional details from the test developer as well. If families want more information about different components of the test. So like you said, you know, it's gonna hold the, the total score for each of the components. It's actually a little bit more detailed than the DIBELS scores that you're receiving for your, your child. Because it's giving you all the DIBELS component, not just the overall component. But that, that report that you're mentioning is also helpful for family to give that context, right? So, you know, how does my child perform as compared to the school, compared to the nation? Like, that's also, yeah, interesting, important context to know. And on Performance Matter, it's gonna record all the different components of DIBELS.
Does it also give, because I'm curious, and it's something, Mark, you said, that kind of had me thinking. Like, I know when we get to middle school and parent-teacher conferences, there are limited slots. And so not everyone gets to meet with a teacher, and it's kind of on a first-time, first-time, first-serve basis. And it's always been a challenge, right? And I'm curious, like, if you have this information there, can teachers go in and write comments? That, you should kind of, where their observation is, like their take on students and so on and so forth, to kind of help alleviate. Where you get ten minutes with a teacher and you're trying to schedule different ones and you kind of prioritize areas. But is there a way to add some commentary from the teacher so that parents can kind of see, you know, maybe twice a year or something, how their student is doing? And from just a personal note from teachers to families?
You mean on the platform? I'm not sure that there's a way to do that. I think teachers are already doing that on the report cards.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, the, just the other thing that this makes me think of is, obviously, the access to the data is important. Like, the thing that really matters is quality of the assessment, right? How good are the assessments that we are giving? And then, how are, it's great, parents have access, I'm really excited, teachers have access, and all the work you've done around that. Because the, the work around how teachers are utilizing that data to inform instruction is the biggest lever for instructional improvement we possibly can focus on. And so really glad to see that. I assume the kind of professional development and work that's been happening this year will continue within future contexts to, to support. Because I assume families will have more questions about this as they see access. And so we wanna make sure our teachers feel supported and being able to answer those and also, you know, improve their instruction. I, one thing you did mention was common planning time, and I know that's come up in some of the site council meetings, and this is a less a question for you. But just, I guess, my, my understanding through the site council presentations is mostly the development of common planning time seems to have been kind of coming organically through school leaders, right? Like, assistant principals have come in and re-honed the schedule, which is fantastic, to try and find more common planning time. I guess I'd be interested in a conversation at the district level of just like, what are we doing at the district level to support school leaders? To say like, this is actually the expectation for how much common planning time we wanna make sure every teacher has across grades. Because I think right now, they're getting it once a week. And I think, you know, we should be trying to figure out how we can do much more of that. Because that's such a, you know, data has shown how effective that is at improving practice and creating opportunities for conversation around data and around student experience to improve instructional outcomes. So that, that's something that this makes me think of. But we'll just end on like, I, I saw this is a three-year project that you've been working through and like kind of very diligently, kind of step by step. And so really appreciate all your work to, to roll this out. It's great that we are, from where we were in the prior to Power School system, it's so much easier to be able to pull data, look at data, analyze things and move more quickly, and that's great. So thank you.
We definitely hope that we can continue building on our progress.
Thank you.
I just wanna congratulate you, because it's come off so long, so far in the past several years, like you were to say. And I feel like this milestone of tomorrow, rolling this out to families, it feels like it's sort of bringing to fruition a number of through lines of conversations over these past couple of years. It's the, certainly, it's like the personalized learning, sort of ability to support and challenge all of our students for that academic excellence piece, most important. But it is the transparency, the communication, family engagement, the systems building that we talked about a lot last year into this year. Like this, this, yeah, like you just said, Mark, this would be like an extremely high-lever system that did not exist. And you've done so much hard work to make it possible, so thanks so much.
We'll have a link right on the main website that people can click to get their login information to, so. We're trying to make it easy for everyone. We know it's the end of the year, but it was really. But it was really important that that override got passed so that we could move forward with this project too, so. Here we are and it it's a wonderful way to end the year.
No more feeling guilty about losing those pieces of paper. I have never done, but I know it happens to some people.
I said, I appreciate you. So we asked Danielle Wetmore, our Director of Student Services, who's been back there diligently. We appreciate all the work you you do too, Danielle, and I know that you've had an opportunity. To speak to the Finance Subcommittee earlier um this school year and the invitation came. To speak to the whole general community, uh, the whole school committee and the general community about some of the topics that you covered. I know this isn't an overall presentation about special education, but some of the highlights about the drivers of. Um, the special education budget and costs that that you incur in your department.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, everyone. How are you? Yes, so I presented to the Finance Subcommittee before the override and they had asked that I return to speak to the larger community about. Um, just the unpredictable, unpredictable nature of special education funding and resources, so. I am going to, I know you have a quite a long agenda, so I'm gonna try to keep my presentation really brief. Um, so that you have an opportunity to ask some questions. Um, and I'm just give a general overview of. Our special education, um, how we're federally federally regulated, but also just. Um, some of our volatility in special education, um, and resources and use of them, so. Make sure, yes, um, just wanna make sure you're the right one. So um, the special education falls under IDEA, which is a federal law. That requires just right, requires school districts to provide a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment for all of our students. Um, providing um an equitable approach to um learning for students, um, an opportunity for them to. Grow at this, at the rate that they are best possible. We do have a small grant that is a portion of our funding. It's a pretty, I mean, Katie has probably talked about it a bunch, but it's a very small component of our funding. It's not nearly enough to cover all of the costs of special education, but it is there. Um, this past year we got about. A total of about one point three five ish million dollars. And our budget is much larger than that, as you all know, at this point. Um, part of that is to fund our child find process. Which I'll talk a little bit about and that also takes um bulk of our of our funding as well. So next slide. So IDEA and Child Find, so Child Find is a federal mandate, it's part of IDEA, as I mentioned, that requires state and local education agencies. To actively identify, locate and evaluate children from birth to age twenty, at the end of their twenty-first year. Um, so whether or not they may have disabilities. Um, for Milton, that includes um not only students attending Milton Public Schools, but any resident of Milton. So some of Serena's job that is tasking is that if a student goes to a private school or is homeschooled and the parent has a um. Concern of a suspected disability, our obligation is to evaluate that student for special education services in any area of suspected disability, so. Um, in addition to our forty-four hundred students, any student that um resides in the district. Additionally, a little um additional piece of that is that any student who attends a Milton private school. Um, is also eligible for child find services. So part of my job at the beginning of the year is to reach out to all of those schools, sending letters. Offering them the opportunity to have their student evaluated. Um, the difference, um, so. Technically, parents have the opportunity to um either have their students evaluated in the school, in the district in which they reside, or the district in which they. Um, attend their private school, so um, the difference in that is if a Milton resident is evaluated in Milton. They are offered, if they're found eligible, an IEP, an individualized education program. If they, let's say, go to. Um, I don't know where, Zavarian, that's in Westwood, right? If they go to Zavarian, they have the, they can choose to go through Westwood Public Schools um and get evaluated through Westwood. Um, if they're found eligible, they would be eligible for a service plan and non-IEP, so a little bit of difference, uh, but that does pull. Um, pool our resources and funding additionally, um, and this is um the unpredictable nature, the predictable nature of this. Is that part of our um IDEA grant funding is earmarked for um evaluation. And support of special education students for um those students in private school or homeschool who live in Milton. So we have um a share of that funding that we have to provide resources to private schools in Milton, essentially. This year it was around seventy thousand dollars, seventy two, I think, total. So just a little bit about that. Next slide, please. Uh, the other piece of that is that we, um, so proportionate share is what I just described, it's providing a portion of our funding, our federal funding. To private schools. Um, that supports students who um go to school in our district but do not live in our district, so. Students who live in our district and go to a private school are um entitled to um individual entitlement, which means they can use the district. Resources um to you, to um access their services on their IEP. So that pulls some of our friends, a lot of our families opt out of that option, but they are, we are required by law to offer them. The services and supports as gridded in their IEP. Um, so that is part of our resources as well. Next slide, please. So in terms of the unpredictable nature of special education, um, there are predictable costs, we try to anticipate as much as possible. Katie and I meet monthly with our teams um to talk about students who. We may see as um starting to need additional resources and kids that we're thinking um may need additional supports. Additionally, we look at transportation costs and things that we can anticipate as much as possible. Um, so what I'm gonna talk about is a little bit of here's what we can control and then there are unpredictabilities that we. Um, can anticipate throughout this budget process. Um, the first area is. Um, four areas I'll talk about are registration and residency, special education evaluation, I'll go into a little bit more detail about that. Um, legal and settlement agreements and then ongoing strategies to monitor student need, so. In terms of registration residency, as part of our federal obligation, any student who moves into town. Um, we are required by law to obviously pick up their IEP if they're found eligible for special education services. So that is if a student is a move in and has an out-of-district placement, we're required to. Uh, fund that out-of-district placement because that was what the team determined as the least restrictive environment. Additionally, um, for students who require intensive services within the district, so if we have to hire an instructional assistant, because that's. What's outlined on their IEP, or if we have to, um, if they require substantially separate setting. Um, this year we had an uh, a move in, at least one move in who required a substantially separate setting and we were full. We had no room in the program anymore, so we had to subsidize some of that work while we found um a spot for him. And worked collaboratively with the parents to be able to give that student the support that they need um and the environment that they are required. Um, additionally, changes in guardianship, so um, we've had students um who um require. They can't live in their home anymore, so they have to move to another town, um, and we're responsible for transportation. Um, there's a best interest meeting that happens. We determine whether or not the student should move into Milton or out of Milton into their um. Into their new district and not their school of origin. Um, and if that's deter- however that's determined, we are on the hook for the transportation costs. Or any sort of funding that is required, so we don't always know when students are, you know, moving in or out as it relates to guardianship. And the same um for students who move into town, um, we've had students that we've commuted. This year up to um, up to an over an hour away so that they could be in their school of origin. Um, that could be up to three hundred and twenty-five dollars a day uh for transportation costs uh for 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 school distances that far. We work really hard with the um transportation companies to um, to help support. You know, putting students on a van together, but um there are mitigating factors such as students can't be on a van for more than an hour at a time, so when you're bringing a student to. You know, the South Shore, um, or the Cape, uh, you really can't put another student on the van because it um takes that extra time. To put um the additional drop off and pickup. Okay, so next slide. Um, evaluation process. Um, so this can be really unpredictable. The trend um in special education evaluations is continuing to rise in the district. Um, right now, um. We, part of that increase, I think, is the post-COVID sort of worry about um how our students are making effective progress, whether or not they. Do have um a dis- suspected disability, um, so parents may um request. Or have their own independent neuropsych. I know that there was a long waitlist for a while, so we got an influx of independent neuropsych evaluations. This past fall, um, our high school um, school psychologist. Had thirty-eight evaluations at one time. Um, generally speaking, thirteen is about um high, thirteen to fifteen is like really the max. So when you're thinking thirty-eight, that's an additional twenty plus evals that we have to fi- figure out how to um. Move somewhere else because it's impossible for one person to evaluate thirty-eight students at a time. Um, initial evaluations take about fifteen to twenty hours from beginning to end. Um, reevaluations are about ten and it's depending on the intensity of the um, the suspected disability, so if it's a. Specific learning disability, those are generally a little bit shorter in terms of evaluation. If you're thinking about a social, emotional and neurological disability, you're talking a much more complex, comprehensive evaluation. So um, that's why the number is so broad. Um, on average, psychologists in a given district. Have about seventy to eighty evaluations in a year and that's when they are only evaluating students. Our psychologists are on on track to close to one hundred um each on average. I think our high school is around one hundred twenty right now, which is really high. So in order to offset some of that, um, and some of those resources, we have to contract um out to agencies or. We were fortunate enough to have someone who was interested in um uh coming to us a couple of times a week, so we were able to. Work with her on a rate that made sense where she had guaranteed work through the end of the year because of the number of evaluations that we had. Our psychologists are really talented, so it's really hard to um have them just testing all day. When we're working on building programs and systems in the district, to have that valuable resource, only dedicated to testing is really hard. Um, I just wanna put that plug in for them. They're excellent. As are all our related service providers, evaluators and special educators, everyone works super hard. Um, so I think it's important to note that. Um, additionally, um, if a parent is not um satisfied with the results of an evaluation. They can ask for an independent educational evaluation, an IEE. Um, in that case, um. We generally are required by law to approve that, um, if they're unsatisfied and we've done all the evaluations that. Cover the the request. Um, those can, um, so last year the state increased. The state rate for independent evaluations, um, so this can cost anywhere um between three thousand and forty-five hundred dollars. Depending on how many evaluations the parents disagreed with. Um, this year I think we spent over twenty thousand dollars in independent educational evaluations. Um, and we can't anticipate or predict um whether or not a parent will be satisfied, we think all of our evals are wonderful, so. Okay, so next slide. And then the um second to last area is sort of legal involvement and settlement agreements, so anytime a lawyer is um. Represented in a meeting, our, it is a practice that our legal counsel also is represented in that meeting. Um, so. It, a lot of times, um, a parent will come with an advocate who's also a lawyer, um, and in those cases we have to. Provide our own lawyer, even if that person is acting as an advocate. Um, it is well within a parent's right to have an advocate, I often encourage it. Because I think it gives some context for the parent to, it's a very, very, special education is very, very complex, so to have someone. To help walk you through some of the processes and things like that, it's really helpful. On our end, it's our obligation to have our own legal counsel in those situations. So we don't always anticipate that and can't always anticipate that. Um, if a, um, if there's a hearing request either by the the town of Milton or by a parent, um, obviously. That is legal involved, so we don't always anticipate that a parent will file a hearing request. Or that we in turn feel that we're supporting students in the right way, um, so that will um have unintentional or un. Anticipated costs as well. Um, and then finally, we've had this year, um, we had two Office of Civil Rights complaints. Um, and because of the significance of that federal um complaint, we um, we ask our legal team to be involved and help navigate. That um process as well. Which is unanticipated. And then finally, I mentioned this at the beginning, um, we're always monitoring our students, ensuring that they're getting. Um, the best, best support possible that we can offer in the district. Um, that being said, we have students who have unanticipated needs come up. Um, where they may need a more restrictive environment than originally anticipated. Because we do the budget so far out, we can only anticipate so much um in terms of student need, so. If a student um is starting to struggle and ends up hospitalized and needs more support, um, we are um. We reconvene our team and talk about what additional supports that needs, which are unexpected costs. Um, that could look like an increase in services. Um, it can look like an increase in, increase in instructional assistance support, or we need to then onboard. New staff um or training, extended evaluations either in district or out of district. Um, which are uh forty-day evaluations to help understand um. The students' needs at that given time and get recommendations from either a program in district or out of district. Out-of-district placements, uh, day therapeutic placements, um, language-based placements out of district where um the student exceeds our needs. And then finally, we've had a couple of students this year who have had um additional needs um in getting to school, so they've had a therapeutic day placement. Which has turned into a residential placement. Um, so all of those can be um as anticipated as possible, but at times. Given the nature of student need, it can vary. I think that's it. Questions?
I have a couple.
Sure.
Thanks for the presentation. It's great to meet you too.
Nice to meet you.
The, the, the obligations to private school students who. Either live out of Milton but go to school here or live in Milton and go to school somewhere else, okay? And I understood there were different financial obligations depending on the situation. Can you describe the magnitude of that? Like, is that, is that something that we are? Are those services we are, or evaluations we're providing on a frequent basis at a high cost, or is that sort of? A small portion of the overall work that you all are doing?
It is increasing. Uh, we, I think in the last week had a number from a specific private school in town, um, we had three or four. Referrals for evaluation for a private school, um, of students who both reside in and out of Milton. It has increased over the past couple of years. Um, there is new leadership at each of the, at least I can speak, I can't speak to. Other towns' private schools, but in Milton, um, there has been a change in leadership at many of the schools in town, so. My work with them, I'm required by law to meet with them at least three times a year to explain the child find process, to explain their um portion of the funding. Through IDEA, um, and so I think um the collaboration with them has um sort of increased their um involvement. In the child find process, which is great for us to be able to identify students. Um, generally speaking, um, the range of outcomes can vary. Some of those students are found eligible, um, many are not, um, they don't need specially designed instruction to. Uh, make effective progress, so um they're generally found ineligible.
And is, are all of those private school service or evaluations paid for through IDEA funding? Or are we paying for it out of our own budget as well?
That's a great question, so um, I try to, this is really a really confusing topic and I think, um, you have to find like really. Minute uh litigation around this, but there is proportionate share, which is the um federal funding source and that is generally for students who. Um, attend school in Milton Public Schools, that's a, that's a federal funding. Um, the local funding, which is the taxpayer dollars, is called individual entitlement and that's for students who. Either go to private school in Milton or somewhere else but reside in Milton, they're eligible for services in the Milton Public Schools. So um, it's a locally funded bucket. So Milton's students are receiving um Milton funding, students who, this is just for services. Um, when it comes to child find, um, it's all Milton funded.
It's okay if I ask a couple more, just go to my list. Um, the uh. Under child find, does this, does this also include early intervention and sort of early childhood assessments?
Three plus, so it's three years old plus. Um, our obligation to students who are turning. Our obligation to students who are turning three is to re, is to evaluate them. So, our team chair and preschool director have a relationship with our EI, early intervention person to try to figure out ahead of time how many evaluations are coming in, what that might look like. But our responsibility starts at three years old. So we usually evaluate at two, two-point-eight years old, depending on when we get the referral. But we have to, if this student is a resident of Milton, so we have to go through the residency process to ensure that they are residents and we're using our funding to support students that live here. Once they go through the residency process, we evaluate them and then we have to have their IEP meeting by the time they turn three years old.
And then just a couple of evaluation questions. But you mentioned that there's significant number of evaluations that, like the evaluation load is high. What is the typical wait time for an evaluation for, for a family or for a student?
So we're legally mandated to have, as soon as a consent form is signed and we receive it, we have thirty days, thirty school days to evaluate and forty-five days to have the meeting, school days. If we're outside of that, we're out of compliance, so our teams do a really, really nice job. And that's also part of the reason why we need some of the contracted services in order to meet those federal timelines.
Makes sense. And then, how often are independent, how often do the IEs? How often are those contradicting district evaluations? Like, how many of the, like, when they're in, when they're finding different things, do those often end up in?
Litigation somehow, yeah, mediation, yeah. Not typically, we don't get to the point of mediation or litigation. I think our teams do a really nice job of navigating the process with parents. I think, you know, there's two different, so some of our parents choose, and I think some of it is, or a lot of it is for identifying diagnoses. So, school districts can educationally find a disability, but we can't diagnose. So, for example, if a student has dyslexia, we can identify them as having SLD with components or features of dyslexia, but we cannot diagnose a student with dyslexia. So a lot of times, parents will want that diagnosis and so they'll seek their own independent neuropsych. So that's different than an independent educational evaluation. We consider them alongside our own evaluations regardless of how they got to us. Generally speaking, there are some similarities. I think the recommendations can vary and be different. So I think teams work with families as a whole team to navigate and mitigate like what makes sense for the student in the set, in the school setting. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah. It's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I add one point?
Yeah.
Especially with the evaluations, that keeping in mind that not just the school psychologist, so the OTs and the speech therapists and so the service providers in the district are also the ones doing the evaluation. So if you have a heavy load of, if a number of evaluations come in, those are still the people who are supposed to be providing the services to the students who are on an IEP. So that can definitely be where, like, where that conflict comes in, where you would need contracted services because you can't be taking time away from students' IEPs to do those. So if you have twenty speech evals and two speech therapists with a large load of students, then you'd have to contract it out in order to keep the services provided and meet that forty-five day timeline. So that's where the, like, I know the school psychologist is big, but I think the other pieces are great.
And I use school psychologists because they generally evaluate every single student. So it gives like a more comprehensive number, whereas a speech pathologist, OT. But I think the difference is, is school psychologists are only evaluating for the most part. And our speech and language pathologists, our occupational therapists, our PTs and our BCBA's are all servicing students all day. So to then find time in their day to spend ten to fifteen hours evaluating that per student, while their caseloads might be a little bit different from a testing angle, they still have a full caseload of students that they see multiple times a week. So that's a really good point. Thank you. And I'm super proud of their commitment to students. And it's like such a pleasure working with all of them because they are so, so committed to students in making up time and making sure services aren't missed and not sacrificing any of that for evaluation. And being really thoughtful with families and, and student need, so shout out to them.
Just a couple things. How many school psychs do we have across?
We have currently six.
Six, okay. About one per?
One per school and then the preschool generally are. One of our elementary school psychs also takes on preschool, which can be really, really challenging because the unpredictable nature of EI and what, how we're getting students, so. Yeah, six. I think we could use a few more, but.
Yeah, I mean, one for over a thousand student school at the middle school and one for over twelve-hundred student school at the high school. That's really.
I think they recommend one per five-hundred students, so.
Yeah, so we are not.
We're not there.
We're not close, but thank you. I think the additional context of just our speed rates have drastically increased kind of coming out of pandemic. Around like thirty percent increase, one of the highest rates in the state. The other thing folks should know, it did drop, our overall percentage of students with disabilities dropped from SY twenty-four to SY twenty-five by about a percent. So that's interesting, though again, costs continue to rise. I've been trying to think about this from like the financial lens. Because obviously, the pressures of special education have, were a significant impact on us, continue to be a significant impact on the district's ability to operate within budget within the current year and a big driver of the override. I know you say, again, it is, it is very difficult to predict. I think it is our job to figure out how to make it, you know, how to predict it as well as we possibly can. Can you provide some context around like? Did you see a significant change this year? Or do you have like, do we have good data systems around collection of, for like, number of new students that are coming into the district with an IEP? Because we obviously know the kids who are ours, right, and come from one year to the next. Obviously, something could develop over a year. But it's probably not going to jump from like nothing to something like substantial in terms of like an out-of-district placement unless something, you know, terrible occurs.
I would say that, that is, has been quite a few cases this year, specific around anxiety, school avoidance, challenges with students getting out of bed. And so that has led to an increase in services and eventually, and out-of-district, what we would call an extended evaluation to help us understand what we could do more. And that generally is after we exhaust all of our resources, to the point where our BCBA's are going into the home and trying to support families with, you know, incentive plans or anything. But mental health, I think, is a challenge because it's not something you can incentivize to get a student to school. That's more of a behavior intervention.
Yeah. No, that's a good, good point. Do you have a sense of like, about how many new kids come into the district that require services on a, on an annual basis?
I mean, just today, we had three. But those services vary. They're not super intensive. I think out of district, we've had two this year. I do think that many of the findings of eligibility are internally, our initial evaluations where students are found eligible. That being said, we, I was trying to get the numbers ready for tonight and I didn't, so I can certainly circle back to them. I was looking at the number of initial evaluations versus students being found eligible versus ineligible. And what we started collecting data on this year and haven't perfected it. So it's something we're working on for next year, is looking at how this, how the child find process was triggered. So whether it's through an independent evaluation, that automatically triggers our own evaluation process. So that way, we have a legal right to use our own evaluations to consider a long time, alongside any independent eval. So, an independent neuropsych evaluation triggers our own child find process. A, our student support team, which is our, part of our MTSS, that can trigger an initial evaluation. Or any sort of parent concern or teacher concern can trigger child find. So a lot, that is where we're finding a lot of our eligibility and a lot of our resources being used.
I think the thing I think would be helpful from our ends, from my end at least, as I think about it is, like if we have some of the sense of like, what is the, again, these like averages of number of new students, number of kids who like within the school year usually, you know, come in. How many, what's the average number of evaluations and that cost over kind of time? And, you know, what's maybe like the seventy-fifth percentile over the, if we look at the last six years, right? What, what's a little bit above average for our budgeting purpose? And like, what are some inflection points? Why we know like, hey, we had, again, thirty, we have thirty-two psychologist evaluations at the start of the year. Like, that's a red flag from a budget standpoint. We need to like, talk about, like, this is gonna create a difficult trend for us for this year. What are we doing to kind of figure out how we cover that gap? Or, again, we had ten new students move in to the district that have significant IEPs. Normally, we have two, right? Those are things that are really difficult because we do the budget so far in advance. But like, what are the things that we can have in place from a data perspective to be able to raise the red flag earlier to say, we obviously need to provide these services, these kids deserve the services. But like, how, how do we do that within the financial constraints we have? And so I guess that's, that's where my line of questioning is here.
Yeah, no, 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 that makes perfect sense. And I think when I arrived here, there, we had such a high turnover of team chairs who generally collect a lot of that data on how they, you know, how they receive the evaluations. Our, our related service providers have done an amazing job of tracking their own data. It's really how do you collect it and have it as a collective unit to be able to sort of aggregate it and like figure out the questions that you're asking. And that system has never been in place, so we really started diving into that the start of this year. We've had some consistency in our team chair roles overall. So it has been, we've been able to sort of start piecing that piece together as well. So, yes, we're in agreement and on track to doing that for sure.
I have a question. If anybody else minds. So, a couple of things. So, from that standpoint of the resources. So I think, if I understand it correctly, the resources are allocated at a school level, right? And so, is, is there the opportunity for, like, I think about maybe from more the standpoint of like instructional assistance or that sort, to to have an understanding of where, you know, what we have for resources and staffing? And then as things change, because, you know, students either come off of an IEP or they move or they move from one school to the next. So is there the opportunity to look across the district to see what we have? Like, I guess where's the, where's the coordination on that point? Would that be you or is that? And then, so if you know that student A has had a paraprofessional, but they don't necessarily need them anymore, they've kind of progressed from the point of needing it, how is that resource then reallocated or determined if we don't need that resource anymore? Like, where does that discussion take place?
So I work with team chairs weekly. So we meet at a team chair meeting and some of the work we're doing is exactly what you're saying. So we just, it hasn't been made public yet, but we are working together on the draft program grid, so that way we're on the same page and it can be publicized. Right now, it's with special ed teachers and we're working together on making sure that we're all on the same page and understanding. We also just released a program referral form. So that way, we're looking at our district-wide programs from a district level and not from a school-based level. And each school has equal access specifically at the elementary school of accessing any district programs. Along those lines, some of the additional work we're doing is around an instructional assistant referral process, entry and exit criteria and fade planning. So we're looking at what criteria does a student need to meet in order to reduce some of the, the service delivery times? And then in terms of reallocation, it would just depend on where the additional needs are, if any. Our requirement is to student need. So if there are instructional assistants that are no longer needed, that, you wouldn't necessarily reallocate them. Yeah, we haven't gotten to that point yet, so.
Right, right.
But yeah. So there's, that's where a lot of the work is done. And then I'm bringing that work to central office so that we can have the larger discussion on how to roll that out on the school level. I meet with the principals monthly and we have a lot of those candid discussions around needs in their buildings and, and how to allocate resources.
The second thing is, you know, we've talked a lot about out-of-district. And I think Mark, I was almost looking at it through a different lens, which is if we look, and I want to keep in mind, we're talking about kids here, right? So I don't want to be talking about them as.
Agreed.
But if we're looking at, if there are sixty-five, I'm gonna throw out a number, students that are out of district, do we find that there is a predominant profile of student that is out of district that maybe historically we haven't had a program or something in place that could support them? So that, I'm not necessarily saying that you're bringing those students, that you're, you're changing their world. But as we're looking at it, we're like, wow, of the sixty-five, twenty have dyslexia or twenty have some sort of learning disability. Twenty students at eighty to a hundred thousand dollars a year versus like finding the program and staffing it. Like, is, I, I guess the question is, is that, is the work being done at that level so that we can begin to impact that in the coming years?
Yes, yeah, yes, for sure. We, I, that was sort of a jumping off point for me. It was looking at the profiles of students and figuring out how we can better align our programs to meet students' needs in district. One of the amazing things about families here is that they really want their kids in the community. And so that's super cool for me to like, you know, for them to be asking, how do we get my student back in? You know, they, they love this, they love school A, but, you know, they really want to be, you know, have their high school experience here or their middle school experience. So being able to engage in that conversation. We did it with a number of students this year at the high school level specifically and have had multi-month conversations with Karen Cahill and the out-of-district coordinator to have students come and do practice hours, practice days, to make sure that they felt that this was the right fit for them and they can navigate the school. So we are looking at profiles. I think specific learning disabilities is a really, an area where we do have quite a few students out. So, making sure we're aligning our very strong language-based programs and, and promoting them is really strong. We have great teachers in the program. We're aligning the systems in the program and sort of the profile of student. I also think we've had some social, emotional students out. So by building from the ground up our Quest and Compass programs, our social, emotional programs to be, and this is where the school psychologists and adjustment counselors come in to provide that direct support. But all of those things are in play to help get kids in their least restrictive environment by us being able to support them.
That's great.
To just go off of this. You know, we've talked a lot about how unpredictable some of these situations are or how difficult it is to forecast. And so looking at patterns of the existing sixty-five or so students is good. Not knowing if this, if this sort of information is available, but if we could go, if ten years ago, we knew what the next ten years would look like, would we have made resource choices a decade ago differently than we did? It seems like we, I don't know if this is exactly right, but it seems like we sort of live in the year.
We're very reactive and not proactive.
Reactive and.
I feel like I say that a lot.
Could we like pull the last ten years of out-of-district placement data? And my guess is patterns would emerge that might inform what we do for the next ten years. And I, I get it that, that special education rates have increased pretty significantly since the pandemic. So, there's, there's that part that seems unique here. But I think, I think a retrospective of out-of-district placement would be, would be, would probably provide some really valuable insights.
Yeah, and there's, there's research out there as well. So I know that there are Milton trends, but there, it's, and there are nationwide trends as well that align really well with what is happening in Milton. And I think, I want to say two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, prior to COVID, there was a huge trend in increase in anxiety, school avoidance. And we're continuing to see that trend now. I think COVID exacerbated a lot of that because of students having to be at home and not have the pressure of going out and socializing. I think there are trends in the social pragmatic, understanding abstract, abstract friendships and relationships and how to navigate those relationships, especially as they get into middle and high school. There are trends in executive functioning deficits and ADHD, so how do we address those? Those don't always lead to out-of-district placements, but I think if you don't address that need early enough, and what we look at a lot of times at the younger ages is the more, does this student's disability impact their ability to make effective progress? And what's the first thing people think of when they think of effective progress academics, right? You're not thinking about the social, emotional component of things when a student's in second or third grade and they're, you know, quirky in the classroom and having, you know, all the students like them and they find them engaging. and they're, you know, quirky in the classroom and having, you know, all the students like them and they find them engaging. But as soon as middle school hits, that quirkiness or uniqueness, um, can be perceived by other students as, you know, not as typical as, you know, developing friendships. So what we're working with as a team is, how do we identify or have these identifiers early on? What additional screening tools can we use and things like that to be able to support student needs, um, earlier on when their brains are more malleable and they're more willing to, um, attend, um, a lunch bunch or a counseling session or something like that?
Yeah, I was gonna, I think that that's important because, you know, Mark, you were saying like the red, the thirty-eight, is it like a red flag from a budget perspective at the high school? I was looking at it as thirty-eight is a red flag for me on what did we miss in middle school? That then initiate, that then says we need to do thirty-eight evaluations when typically you do ten. So, to your point, are we looking at those screeners? Are we doing those? Are we giving those services earlier that aren't necessarily special education services per se, but addressing some of those things that then rise to the level of an evaluation at the high school? That, that then does bring in the, you know, the add, the, the contract costs and those sort of things, so.
And we have a handful of students right now at the high school level who are getting rules-based reading instruction. And, and ninth grade, that's, you know, right now, you're, at this point, we should be teaching strategies on how to support reading, and not, uh, rules-based reading. So, something concrete that we've implemented this year, um, through our case screening process is, students who are flagged, we're going to, um, I'm working with Kat DeRoche on doing additional screening tools for early dyslexia, um, identification at the kindergarten level, so that way we can, um, have interventions earlier on and be able to support students, um, more holistically, earlier, so.
Thank you. Are you noticing, like, when you do those interventions early on, especially some of the, you know, you were talking about students appearing more quirky and funny in elementary school, but then they get to middle school and it turns into something else? Are you noticing when you provide those supports early on that they have an easier transition to middle school?
I think from he, in my short time here, I can't definitely say that, but in my experience overall, yes. I think when you, um, have interventions, um, earlier on around, um, explicit coaching in social pragmatics or explicit coaching in, um, you know, and, and we, I want to passionately say that, um, we're all unique in our own way and we're all neurodiverse in our own way. So how do we not only help students, um, identify, um, you know, how to be students in school and how to make friends and, and all of that stuff? It's really how do we all, um, gain acceptance of each other and, in a way that, um, makes sense? So, it can't be like, oh, this kid's quirky, um, that's not normal in middle school. It's like, how do we not only help supportive students in, um, their growth and development, but, um, create acceptance around them as well? And that's a lot of training, professional development work, um, on our end to, to, um, support at the MTSS tier-one and tier-two level that I think we are still growing in, so.
So, you touched upon like, you know, um, them interacting socially with others, other kids in, let's say, middle school, right? Like, how does, you know, I know we've talked about like restorative justice and some of the work that they do. Could you kind of explain like some of the strategies that you use specifically in middle school for, like, kids to fit in better in terms of, um, just, you know, kids with.
More social deficits? Yeah, sure, uh, or, um, uh, yeah, so, some of the, it's really around explicit coaching and then helping generalize that skill. So, um, what I, um, when I'm dreaming big of future programming, it's really looking at that profile of student and having the explicit instruction be, because, because most of those students have high cognitive abilities and are super smart. So, um, if they're missing an academic class, um, it's not at a detriment to them because they can easily pick it back up. So using, or, using that academic support or instructional support time that generally is part of the secret service as a more social-emotionally driven class where they're getting explicit instruction in social pragmatics. You know, when you go to a grocery store and you have to wait in line, like punching the person in front of you probably isn't the most expected thing to do, and having those, um, concrete examples of, of supporting that and then teaching them how to generalize those skills around their peers in a less restrictive setting. And that's where you use the instructional assistants more proactively, of having them not next to the student, but, um, navigating those social interactions that may not be, um, as perfect as you'd expect them to be.
And then do you do the reverse with their peers as well on how, like, how does that work? So that, that students know, you know, like, hey, that kid isn't strange. It's like, you know, we're all different in our own unique ways and how do we teach acceptance?
I think that is through some of the restorative practices that we've done, um, and I think, you know, there's, you know, I think it's, what's really challenging is when a, you know, a student, uh, appears physically in a certain way. I think it's, um, harder to understand the, the neurodiversity of someone who looks one way and looks another. And so I think that is something that you see through, like, you know, our best buddies. We have, we had fifty-four kids, um, join our, uh, Unified Track this year, and so it's pretty amazing. And so, we have acceptance here, and how do we build off of that for students who, um, have different sets of needs and have more, um, of a neurodiverse.
Is that something that also is at the middle school? Because I know they have a track, a cross-country program, right, in the fall that they do for.
They do Unified in the, oh, in the middle school, yes, yeah, yeah.
They do.
I would, they have, I think it's less formal, um, they definitely have unified, um, activities. And I know the play at the middle school and the high school will have, um, opportunities for all students, so.
Anyone else?
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Danielle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm exhausted, so I'm sure. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Anything else on the superintendent's? Is that it for yours? That was it? Moving right along. All right, with this, all right, for the Chair's report. So, we have to, um, have a vote for school choice. I'm gonna have to pull this up again, shut everything down.
For the purpose of discussion, I can make a motion.
Yep.
Uh, I'll make a motion to, motion is made that Milton not be a school choice district for the FY twenty-six school year.
Second, any discussion?
We remain too crowded, we can't be a school district of choice.
Yes.
It's clear cut.
That was my assumption, that's.
Yeah.
That's my history lesson.
Yeah.
All right, so, we'll have a vote. All right, all in favor? Opposed? All right, it passes. Yep, great, it passes. Sorry, let me go through. So, we passed, um, I, in the folder is the, uh, description of all of the, uh, school committees, subcommittees, and advisory committees. So I just wanted to kind of open up any discussion around that. The goal would be to have people share their preferences with me and before the next school committee meeting, and then we could, we would vote on those at the June, um, was it June fifth, June fourth, at the next meeting? So I didn't know if people had questions about them, um, discuss it. Mark, the, do we want, I don't know if this would come under the finance piece, but the discussion the other day about the, the tri-board, for lack of a better term, meeting, uh, tri-board, um, committee, if we want to give an update on that? With this context?
Yeah, I can do that, because it was likely going to be another, um, townwide committee.
Right.
Um, so had a conversation with, uh, Nick Milano, Amy Dexter, Kitty and Regina were there, and Amanda was there. Select Board Chair Ben Zoll and, uh, Warrant Committee Chair, um, Tom Caldwell. And so, just had a, a conversation, we had not really had a conversation since the original, like, idea came up from the Select Board, um, about this, the kind of two-two-two, what they started calling a tri-board, because that's something that exists in other towns. Brought forth kind of the conversation. We had a finance committee, most of us were able to be there, uh, and talk about a bit. The general agreement is around, like, from a, a construction standpoint, is that kind of two-two-two. It would be something that'd be established by the Select Board, so we don't need to establish it ourselves. But it would be a committee that, within its establishment, would have two spots, two appointments from the school committee. So then Select Board would vote and establish it, and then we would appoint two members, whichever, two members. Technically, we could vote non-school committee members if we wanted to, we just would have two appointments to the, to the seat. We talked a bit about, like, the numbers, the warrant committees, a bit bigger, obviously, than the six of us, they have fifteen members. Generally, everybody at that was in agreement, two-two-two, kind of made sense. And mostly that got to like, what is the purpose of this? This is not a policymaking entity, it can't be, right? That is the purpose of this group, as well as Select Board, um, and not wanting to take the place of the Warrant Committee as the Town Finance Committee. This can't be the Town Finance Committee, the Warrant Committee is established for that function. So this is a, uh, again, meant to take the place of kind of what we lost last year, uh, which is like an information sharing conduit to have conversations, to share information between school committee, Select Board, and improve on that process by having Warrant Committee attend so that they can ask questions, they can participate in discussion, not just attend as passive members, which is what they did, kind of two years ago when we had some joint finance meetings. So, still some work around, like, really honing in on the purpose of this and making sure that is distinct from, I think, some of the concerns. And if I remember right, like, you were bringing up too, of just like, this can't be a group that just like deciding everything behind, they have, they should have no really decision-making rights. It's just a matter of like, getting information out. It would be public meetings, because it would be like, likely involve kind of a, um, I'm sorry, a quorum of like, either our finance committee and/or the Select Board's finance committee. So it'd be a kind of publicly posted meeting. We did talk about the idea that came up at town meeting around having, uh, other town residents a part of it, something we talked about at ours. The feeling across that group was, given that this is not a policymaking entity, uh, it's just like an information sharing entity, not to have additional members at this time. The feeling was that that could change, uh, but wanting to make sure that this is not something that kind of goes off, off the track in terms of its, its purpose and trying to make sure that is, that it's clear and tight. Again, it would still be a public meeting, uh, and the discussion of like, having public comments at, actually at those meetings to get public input, uh, and get public questions through that, but they can not have formal, um, membership. That really the Warrant Committee is, is the entity for that, for like, public members to volunteer to be a part of the finance conversations with the town and things like that. So with some of the, the discussion there, and again, the next step is, Nick Milano is working to put together a, um, kind of proposal on purpose and, um, the establishment of this, and expects that to be at Select Board meeting next week.
Next, yeah, not this one, the following.
I think that's what, that's what the goal is, and then at that point, we would have that as a committee that this group would need to appoint to.
Yeah, yeah, but I think the big piece too, that we had been talking, because I think there was conversation around whether or not we would need to vote to create a subcommittee, but since it is coming out of a Select Board, that that.
Yeah, we'll just appoint.
We would just appoint.
People like we do for other, right, committees that are helped by the Select Board, created, yeah.
Yeah.
So that makes sense, I mean, it sounds sort of just like additional new infrastructure to support collaboration among the boards.
And yes.
And transparency of those discussions.
Right, and yeah.
I think that, if that's the way it's set up, then it does make sense that it's comprised of members of these existing boards. And then it's just sort of, I mean, I think it's great for that to be created, obviously, because what we saw this past year was, you know, the, um, you wouldn't, you don't, it, it didn't function well to allow, like, for, we had to depend upon this past year's Select Board members choosing to create the joint committee by having their own version to collaborate with us. So, I think it, it's good for that to not be something dependent year to year on who happens to be on the Select Board, the School Committee, or the Warrant Committee. Like, I know Tom took a, um, I would say more proactive approach this year from the Warrant Committee side to be collaborative, to, you know, build the relationship, um, from the beginning. And that, I think we saw benefits from that, so just having that not hinge upon like, who happens to be in the seats, I, I feel like that really makes sense.
Yeah, to be established.
Yeah, and, uh, further discussion also came like, just like, and the idea of this tri-board and the name is because of Mansfield, I think, is one of the towns, and Hingham, I think, was another one that, so this is something that, that exists in other towns and, you know, a conversation, again, I'm still reaching out to them to figure out, there's some that apparently one meets just like once a year, that is not what our goal would be. Be to like, have a monthly, just so again, we have kind of the ability to have the, the opportunity to share information as it comes up and, um, not depend on needing to go to public speak at another board's meeting or something like that. But again, the, the, there was concern around like, this just, this is not the Warrant Committee, it's not a policymaking entity.
Right.
It's just about information sharing, about where we're at.
So just sharing information, like no, like voting, no?
There'd be, there'd be no vote.
Yeah.
Good, so that can get added under the joint town-school subcommittees on our list?
Yes.
Yeah, tentatively, it's, it's not created yet.
Yeah, eventually, yeah, when it's created, yeah, okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments about committees?
The only one I had was, not really, I don't think, a committee, but maybe just a working group around the superintendent search. Just, there's lots of work to do, I assume, around, just getting together, like, what is the, the timeline, what's the structure? Doing an initial review of, um, resume. I don't, I don't know what, what we would like delegate to kind of a working group versus wanting to do a whole committee, but just could see there being some benefit to have like, a smaller group of us being able to kind of meet with, John Phelan or whoever else on the district side to help move that work forward and then come to the full committee meeting to say like, hey, here's a, what we would propose around like, our timeline and process for the superintendent search and the public engagement aspect of it and things like that.
Can I ask, how does that, so I know in, for the assistant superintendent search that went on, that there were different people who were on that committee. How does it work from the standpoint of superintendent search? Is it just, like?
The way, well, the way it has worked before, similar to an assistant superintendent search, there's a committee that is created, an initial search screening committee, that, um, for an assistant superintendent or certainly superintendent includes one or two school committee members in that initial group. That also includes, you know, members of MEA, de- depending what the top, like, community members. On the superintendent search, last time, yeah, there were up to three, so there can't be more than three, uh, school committee members, on the search committee, but there's a whole, there's.
Like, who, who sets up the search committee, like?
The, the school committee chair.
Okay, we, okay, glad I asked, okay.
Apply, yeah, yeah, so there, right, there's a process, and there's a process of, like, we put it out to the community. People express their interest in being on the committee. You're considering a number of factors in selecting, you're looking for a range of representation across the schools, levels, various expertise, you're, you know, um, I think there's someone who's leading the search as a staff person, like, a member of central office who's sort of chairing the search. So that you're representing the school committee, but, um, yeah, so, and, but, I mean, it can be, doesn't have to be the way it's happened before. I mean, I think creating a working group would be something I, hasn't happened since I was here, but that's, it sounds like a good idea, I mean, um.
The word's generally just fallen on the chair to kind of.
Well, it's been, no, it's been full school committee discussions, like, so we've sort of had those conversations here with, in the case of the previous searches, MASC, like, at the table guiding us with that.
And these discussions, I would say, like, in terms of what type. And these discussions, I would say, like in terms of what type, like what certain. Criteria we were looking at, right? That was a big part of it, like focus on this, and this, and this, like based on. Our guiding principles and so on and so forth, like aligned. So that was really important, I think, when we created the job posting, right? And I think when we got applications, I remember, I think, two school committee members volunteered, weren't part of this reading committee volunteer. To go through all the applications and kind of. Select who would be on the committee from the community.
Yeah, different people. And I would say all the school committee members had roles to play at various layers of the process. So. You know, this is just the initial, what we're talking about here is just the initial round, sort of screening and doing first round interviews. And then, you know, I think, I'm not aware of a standard process. I think for the. Assistant superintendent level positions, there's been a process of having. You know, like. One or more school committee members in a first round and then a, you know, a different one or more school committee members in a. Subsequent round. In the case of a superintendent search, so I think the expectation would be that. The, there's a screening committee that identifies finalists and then the full school committee is. Obviously checking references and interviewing all the finalists. And coming to a decision as a full school committee about who to appoint. So. What gets to that point in the process though is what you're talking about. And I think how that, how the community is engaged in the process, how are all the stakeholders. You know, various. Bargaining units and central office leaders and every school leaders, important.
I think that might be important to maybe engage the community earlier in terms of. Like what. They're looking for. I mean, just if you wanted to throw it out there to the broader community in terms of like, you know, certain qualifications specifically that I think. Would be helpful for, from their perspective of our, our schools, you know, and just kind of. Because I think when we created the initial posting, we kind of decided that if we wanted to open it up.
Well, last time we did, we had community listening sessions. We had, I think, at least two. Open sessions. That we like essentially coded the responses we got in those open sessions and we had a survey to the community. That were identifying priorities and all of that data fed into the criteria that we sought in our. Posting, you know, so we could certainly replicate and do something different, something further, but that was all sort of pre-work. Glenn Kuchar. Kind of helped facilitate a lot of that last time. And of course, that is a, that's. A decision for the school committee to make is we have used MASC's superintendent search services. That is included in our membership as a district with MASC at no extra charge. There are obviously. Search firms that run, like, run professional superintendent searches and. You know, we were contacted by some of them. When we've had openings, they cost a lot of money typically to. To engage and that's not in our budget. So, but, you know, consider. Like, I guess. I think we should probably make a, a decision not to pursue that path, either because it's imfeasible or. We decide MASC is. The right partner for us with the search. I think they also have a good, strong network within Massachusetts. So anyway, but all those things, like maybe to your point, like a working group. I think that's also perhaps something we could talk about at our governance. Retreat too. But. Definitely will be a, a relatively short-term time commitment for whomever. From the school committee joins. That initial screening committee, because that's like a ton of work and a lot, a lot of time, like compressed into a couple of months. So that would be a consideration, I guess, when people are thinking about. What other commitments they're going to have with subcommittees.
So that would not necessarily be. One of the. Discussions or votes for next week, but it would be part of the following week when we talk about a governance, so. As a working group.
Yeah, whether we want to have a working group or again, maybe it should wait and we can, we want to bring in an ASC, then maybe they also would have thoughts on. Wouldn't make sense. I was just wondering like, what, what's the entity essentially that helps like drive the work forward? Or are we spending a lot of time kind of. Building it from the ground at that, at these meetings, maybe.
I think, I mean, as I recall. Anna, it was like, we talked about it. It was basically a standing topic at our school committee meetings for the period of time where. That was on the table. And we just, so, but that could be, that could be the case, whether there's a working group off to the side. Reporting into the full school committee or we're just doing it at the full school committee either way. Like it will be.
Could be a working group. I know, for instance, like that just kind of follows the process. Steps in where it's needed and, you know, that one thing that was really helpful, I remember was that. You know, the school committee members that weren't part of the initial screening committee called and checked all the references. And had reports back. So it was, it was good. So I don't know if that's something like the working group. Wants to do like down the road, you know, however, whoever ends up being on whatever, that's a good way for. Us to be involved, you know, each member to contribute.
Amanda, you said you wanted to hear from each of us outside of the meeting. About our preferences or something.
So just taking a look at the, the different committees, what your preferences are and just send me an email.
And what is, what is the? You know, there's, there's a lot of groups here. Can, we don't have to, we don't have to get into it all here. Maybe we can note it in the document, but just. Both, what is the expectation for contribution, like number, like literally, like numbers of committees and whatever? And then some of these things obviously meet, you know, multiple times a month or once a month. And then some of them like. Security and safety advisory committee. I don't know, I don't know what that is.
Say I probably met. I think maybe twice we did.
Could we add the meeting frequency into this also?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering is if we could add that in, it'll help.
Milton Access, like I'm on the board for them. They meet once a month, I think Tuesdays generally at four. Last few times they moved it up, it, it was the same time as policy, so it couldn't attend, but now policy's on Monday, so that's not. Issue, but. They basically talk about their stuff and we vote on. It's not necessarily, we're just there as part of, there's a member from the select board and there's a school committee and then it's just their board. So they just talk about their, you know, financial reports and all of those kinds of things, updating staff updates. We vote on. Hiring, salaries, things like that, so.
Are you a voting member? Like when you're, okay, so these are voting members of these groups, okay.
Security and safety, not necessarily, we just kind of, you know, sit there and like, you just kind of listen to the conversation and a lot of. Lot of it is confidential, so you just can't, like the, you know, because. They talk about some of the processes that they follow in case of emergency and stuff. So within, uh, there, that particular one has building leaders. At, at some of these other schools and then I represent Chief Madden, Chief King. Our facilities director will be part of that. And then we'll talk about things like, you know, hey, we have a lot of artwork on the walls. Safety hazard, like we have to remove that because from a fire safety standpoint, so things like that. So tips like that. So that building leaders are aware of what they can do internally in the building and then they talk about more, you know, in case of emergency protocols they follow.
Could we add the meeting location too?
What do you mean?
Like if it's in person at its place or is it possibly hybrid or Zoom?
I think that's for this committee to determine every year.
But I think to her point, some of them like, where they're not just school committee only. You know, what do they typically do? So you know.
You could meet them at their office, but it's been very hard during work hours, so for me anyway. So, um, a lot of the members do join remotely to that one, so I, I guess it would be a hybrid one. Typically what they do.
Yeah, and just to say, for, I think typically for the school committees, subcommittees. That are comprised of just our members, it's been the practice to. Like once the new group convenes, to kind of huddle and decide as that group, like what works for us. Work with Charlene to schedule like, we, you know, central office people who need to be there, but. It doesn't have to stay like what it has been. It can shift based on what will work for whomever is going to be on it now.
I think from a time commitment, you know, finance subcommittee is a. Lot, it's a bigger time commitment. I think policy.
Policy is once a month, but. It's cross-posted, so if you wanted to pick certain ones that you wanted, depending on what we're talking about. The members that attended in the past, they'll usually get additional members, but, um, yeah, so people, it is always cross-posted.
Yeah, so I put that note there. I think superintendent evaluation is essentially on hiatus for this coming year. We're not going to be conducting a formal evaluation of an interim superintendent, so I don't actually think we need to form a superintendent evaluation committee this year.
So it, it could be replaced with the superintendent search?
Potentially, if we decide to do, I mean, if the working group would be like a, that would be like a task force, that would be a short, that would be kind of like. Doing some work over the summer into the early fall probably and then. Handing it off to the search committee. I just had put this note about. The bargaining team that Joe Emerson did let us know, we can have a third member on that. Team if we want to. There are pros and cons. Of course, adding a third member makes scheduling that much more challenging, just for people's availability. And as Mark, and as we've noted here, it is. It is a significant time commitment and it's going to be a big commitment next year, just because we're back to a three-year contract, which takes. Many months to typically negotiate. So the. The advantage of a third member, my understanding is that you only need a quorum, so. The third member wouldn't necessarily have to be present, like you could go ahead with a, just two members present. My, my hesitation with that is it then creates more work to like, keep someone looped in if they missed meetings. And there's so much that's happening, because it's for every negotiation session, there's internal meeting and then the bargaining session itself. So I do kind of have a concern about setting something up where it would be built in. Understood that not everyone comes to every session. So for me. Making that a three-person team would only make sense if there were three people that were like.
Committed.
Really wanting to be on it. So.
And then, process-wise, do we? Do we take, for, for all of these groups, are we all voting on membership for each one of them? Is that, like, or are you, Amanda, do you appoint everybody? Like, how, how do, how do we decide that?
I think historically, you've gotten the, if you want to talk about.
Well, so the process, what has worked, kind of, I think, the past couple of years at least, was receiving everyone's preferences individually. Taking those and mapping them to like. What spots are available on these various committees. You know, ideally, what people prefer to do comes close to. Filling the seats that we need to fill across all the committees. I think the chair needs to have a conversation with individuals if there's a situation where either. You have like more than three people that really want to be on a certain thing, that can't have more than three. That's where I think someone obviously cannot necessarily be on it, but again, with our main subcommittees, we're committed to crossposting, so hopefully. Like people should still be able to attend. But that would be like one conversation. It's like, okay. I need to now check in with these people and figure out, okay, which three of the four of you are actually going to be on finance. The alternative would be nobody volunteers to do something and then you have to like. Get someone to step up to do it, even if they didn't want to. And, I mean, the question of what's the expectation, how many are people doing? To me, I think it really varies across. No two of these are the same time commitment wise, so. They're apples and oranges. It's just about every one of us getting a portfolio. That is contributing, which we've had no issue with that. I think. Like we've had, I would say, pretty good equity of participation. And then. You know, it's also just recognizing that we all have lives of full-time jobs and. Young kids and, you know. That's a reality that we want to support ourselves with our work-life balance and whatnot, so. Some people just might not be able to do. A certain one. I think it's just balancing all that. And Amanda. Like to avoid, to do this within open meeting law, it's just she, she is the one who holds. The knowledge of what each of us wants. To be, to, to be able to do some, like, individual follow-up as needed. And that is all in preparation for the next meeting where we put on the table a draft list here where. You know, Selena is no longer reflected here, you're on here, it's a draft. We're looking at it and we can make tweaks in the, in the course of the meeting. Until we ultimately vote, like we don't vote one by one, each committee's membership, but we vote to approve the slate of. Like. You know. Next year's committees. And climate action, we'll be talking to Nick. Yeah, to get, find out how that, getting a new appointee for that, yeah.
Any other, any other questions on that? Everybody's good? All right. Town meeting update, so we were all there, but just to go through, there were. Back to my notes here. So town meeting, for town meeting, the three things that happened, so town meeting approved the FY twenty-six budget. Of seventy-three million dollars inclusive of the override, so. Even though the override passed, it still requires town meeting vote to approve the budget, so that, that passed. There were a lot of questions asked. You know, there were some questions about specific line items. We talked a bit about budget practices, things that we're looking at from. A best practices standpoint and things that we're implementing in the coming year. I think one of the things that we talked about are. Are there changes, maybe within, you know, sort of along the same line on the subcommittee group? Are there changes that we would look at from the standpoint of governance that we could talk about at the, the governance meeting? Are there? You know, things that people had brought up about information around the budget that. Is there more information that people are looking at for the budget? So I think those are things that we need to look at moving forward as well, but. Obviously, the big positive thing was the seventy-three million, was the budget approval. The other thing is the town voted to authorize the seven hundred K be placed in the town's reserve fund for the schools to access to close out. The projected FY twenty-five budget deficit. So that. So that was huge. And then finally, the town voted to establish a reserve fund for that, that special education reserve fund, so no. So no money was allocated to it this year, but the, it was established. So then, you know, there are rules, as we talked about around that, on how that money would be approved if the school voted, asked for it. So it would be a vote from the select board and the school committee. So, but that budget was established, which, which is great. So really kind of tying into what Danielle was just talking about, being able to have something in place to, for those unanticipated special education costs that happen, um, that then won't impact the budget moving forward. So those are the three big things. Did I miss anything? Okay. The next thing is vote, I, right over here. So summer meeting schedule, so we're doing the governance, um, meeting on the second. And then we need to look at having, um, a summer retreat where we can talk about the goals for the upcoming school year. So if, doesn't have to be now, but maybe send out if there's vacation that's planned. So typically, what, like, late July, early August, um, is when we would look at having it. So if there are dates that don't work for people, that are absolutely out of the question, if you can just send those and then we can work on establishing that. I think it would also be after, you know, John's here and he's meeting, you know, he's had all of his meetings. And then I think Assistant Superintendent Katie would be there, correct? Yep. So. Summer retreat, yeah. So, um, yeah, so the big thing would just be just sending any dates. If there's dates that just don't work for people, so that we can, we can get that scheduled.
Question about, um, June eighteenth. So I know that on our current calendar, it, it was noting June eighteenth was sort of if needed. And that otherwise, June fourth would be the last school committee meeting of this year. So I sup, this is probably something to talk to John about, um, his preference. I will, I'm just gonna, this hadn't really, I hadn't thought about it until right now, I'm just gonna say this. I, I would like for us to think about meeting on June eighteenth. I feel like it feels important to kind of get a little bit, um, June fourth just feels premature to me to, like, wrap up our meetings for this year, when he will have just gotten here that week. I feel like we would benefit from having that one additional meeting before we'll be on the, um, last day of school. But just to put that out there, I think we'll probably be talking about that. But I don't know what the rest of you think about, about that, because we just, it, it's been on our calendar, but we hadn't confirmed whether we were having it or not.
I agree. I think we should have that meeting, just to get to know him a little bit more also. And also to have a, a kickstart for, um, our summer work and for the next school year.
Good point.
And supposedly, policy still meets on the seventeenth of June.
The sixteenth, but yeah, um, sorry, I can no longer do Tuesdays. Yeah, no, I think that makes sense. So I think it would be great to, like, you know, just wrap up any loose topics that, you know, especially, even if it's possible to just start the discussion on some of the requests from earlier, um, would be helpful, just kind of going into the summer.
I agree. And then finally, so we have to vote on the MSBA initial compliance certification, so that, there are two things required from MSBA, so there's that. And then, um, we will also then have to vote the next, who, uh, for the school committee members who are on the, um, the school building subcommittee, um, as part of that. So Katie, is there, so is there anything you want to add about the, this, the MSBA? That I would, so it's just, it's required. I mean, it's just one of the required pieces moving forward. So it's required that I sign it. We just need approval for, uh, the school committee chair to sign it and the superintendent to sign it. And then the select board decides it, right.
Also sign it, and then we just need to make sure, um, that we're submitting it back to MSBA by May thirtieth.
May thirtieth, yeah. So this is, yeah.
But this school building committee membership is for.
Separate, it's for June thirtieth, right.
Yeah, so this is the first.
Right, this is the first.
Kind of deliverable for that eligibility period.
Right. And it's just saying that we're following.
Yeah, just to, there are five things we have to do. This ICC, which is thirty days, we have the SBC construction, which is sixty days. That's, so that, those should both be pretty easy. We have the educational profile, which is ninety days. We have the maintenance and enrollment certification, so like, maintenance and, um, building plans and stuff from Tom McCarthy and some enrollment stuff. It's a hundred and eighty days, hopefully do it much sooner. And then we have the, like, authorization of funding, which we already did and already checked that box and did that in the, the spring.
So this is the first. So the first of the five?
Yes.
Yes, but it'll be the second one we'll have completed.
Right, yeah. So we are looking for a vote to, um, approve, uh, both Regina and I signing it.
I'll make a motion to authorize that the school committee chair and the acting superintendent, uh, sign the ICC interim certificate of compliance, the initial certificate of compliance.
Second? All right, great. All those in favor? That is it for the chair's report. Um, we will move to finance subcommittee? Reports, we're skipping.
Uh, yes, sorry. Uh, finance subcommittee, uh, update. So gave some of it, uh, as related to kind of a conversation. We had a finance committee around the construction of the, now we'll call it the tri-board, uh, which then was brought to that joint meeting. Discussion of kind of, again, current budget forecasting, uh, for FY twenty-five. We remain on track of kind of where we have projected in terms of what the end-of-year financial debt will be, still remains kind of, uh, assuming we receive state funding, still remains within, just under that kind of seven hundred thousand dollar threshold that was allocated to the reserve account by town meeting. So that is good news. We'll have updated, um, budget assessments, uh, report in terms of, like, the projections at our next finance meeting next week. Update on the supplemental funding that continues to go through, well, that was discussed. Continues to go through the state, uh, house. So the house has passed it, the senate has passed it. It was in the governor's initial budget. So what remains for that is conference committee and then the governor's signature. Anticipate at this point that it should go through and that, that would happen in early to mid-June. But that continues to be something we will, we will look at to make sure, for some reason, it doesn't fall out of conference committee. Again, we don't, we don't assume that will happen. And so those were a lot of things we discussed. Anything else to add? Uh, and then I will make some motions. Is it really all three of these? I think it is, all right. I will make a motion to approve, uh, vendor warrant report forty-three payable on five-eight-twenty-five in the amount of three hundred ten thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars and one cent, as well as a motion to approve vendor warrant report forty-four payable on five-fifteen-twenty-five in the amount of seven hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. And a motion to approve vendor warrant report forty-five payable on five-twenty-two-twenty-five in the amount of two hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Is there a second? Any questions, discussion?
All in favor?
I have a question, sorry. Just to make sure I understand how I read this warrant.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at warrant forty-four, just the, the first thing at the top is twenty-nine thousand and change for SPED collab, is what the description is for education classes. Seems like a out-of-district placement, probably. What, it's not clear to me, like, what period that expenditure is for. Like, is that, is it just like, does the warrant accumulate expenses just as we receive them? Or is this paying for services rendered over the previous period, however long that is? Or maybe sometimes both?
So it's just a, um, the warrant report is just a summary of the invoices that we process during a specific period of time. So if we're continuously processing throughout the year, it should be reflective of the most recent kind of time period, um, that we would be pressing payment for. So, um, for some of the tuition expenses, because we process on a monthly basis, it should be reflective of the previous month's expense. In some instances, if we have to skip a warrant, if it's a vacation week or if, um, some other kind of, like, logistical reasons, then it could be, the warrant could be bigger. It could be reflective of a longer time period. But it's typically, we just try to, um, pay on a weekly basis and we're paying all of the invoices that have been received up until that time period.
That makes sense. Some invoices might be for the prior week, some invoices might be for a month, some could be for six months, et cetera. Of course, that, that varies. Perfect, thank you. Thanks.
And just to remind all members, there's copies of, obviously, this is the summary sheet. Behind each summary sheet is a copy of every single invoice. That is something I get to look through, uh, every time I sign these. So if you ever have a question about any of the particular lines, or just want to see an example of what a warrant, or it looks like that is available to any member, uh, to come take a look. Any other questions, discussion? Okay. All in favor? Thank you.
And if it's okay, I'll provide some context on the transportation bid.
Great.
So I did, um, just draft a short memo that is in, um, the folder for the meeting tonight, just to provide you some more information. So we are in the last year for our transportation services. So, um, just to be in compliance with Mass General Law and Procurement, we go out to bid for our trans, uh, transportation services. So we've gone through that process and tonight, um, I have a recommendation, because the transportation bid is bid on behalf of the committee. And so I'm just making the recommendation tonight, um, for you all to, um, award the bid to the one vendor that, um, was classified as responsive and responsible. So we solicited bid responses for transportation services. The transportation services were bid in three major categories. Regular education transportation, so that's the yellow bus transportation that does all of the in-town routes. In district special education transportation, so that is, um, some of the more specialized transportation that we provide. And then our out-of-district special education transportation. So that would be taking our Milton students to the placements that may be, um, outside of Milton. The bid specifications and packages were sent out to seventy-six individuals, which represented sixty-four potential bidders. So we did try to cast a pretty wide net, hoping that we would be able to, um, get some good competitive bid, um, responses back. Sixty-four companies were sent the bid specs, ten companies attended our bidders meeting to find out more information. A total of eight bidders submitted a bid by the required deadline. Of the eight bidders, seven bidders submitted bids specific to special education transportation and one submitted a bid for regular educ, education transportation. So after we reviewed the bids and the information that was submitted to us, only one bid was classified as responsive and responsible. And that bid was for our regular education transportation. So that also incorporates, um, our yellow bus, our regular bus routes and that includes athletic transportation and some field trip, um, transportation. And so it is my recommendation that the committee awards the regular education transportation contract of First Student. First Student is the company that we currently utilize. They have, they service a number of districts and communities in the Commonwealth. So, um, they have, um, you know, adequate staffing, adequate fleet. They have their location in Randolph. I also included the big tabulation sheet, so you can see the responses. That gives information on the pricing that was submitted to us. So that information, um, is also included in the folder. And I just wanted to, um, in looking at the budget information, so we had originally, when we originally created the level service budget, uh, back in the fall, we had projected a certain expense, um, for transportation, not knowing what the bits were going to come in, come in at. Since that time and through the budget conversation, we did say, because of the reduction to the level service budget, that we were going to reduce one yellow bus route. And so if you remember, we previously ran eleven buses. We increased that to twelve with some of the supplemental ARPA funding. And so the proposal was to cut us back to eleven, which we will, depending on, we're in the process of doing bus registration now. We do anticipate that we will continue to have a waitlist. But with that reduction, and there was an increase with the rate that was submitted to us for transportation, we still are projected to be within budget, um, that we had assigned in FY twenty-six.
For the eleven buses.
For the eleven buses, yes. And so that will include a, a slight increase in the offset utilization. So you all remember, we implemented a fifty-dollar late fee for those families that register after July first. And so we previously had used, um, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of RABNU to offset the expenses. In the future, we'll be using three hundred thousand, that's what we're projecting. So, um, just trying to make sure that as we're looking at the information that's coming in, we're also tying it back to the budget. So I'm happy to answer any questions next up in the process. If the committee is to award the bid tonight, we will finalize the contract information and then the bid, um, or the contract will go into effect for the upcoming school year.
When, we were talking last time about this, when we're looking at the difference in the buses, you had mentioned something about that maybe there were more seats. Is that the case?
It's a seventy-seven passenger bus.
Versus?
Versus seventy-one. And so it's across a fleet of eleven buses.
So it's sixty-six, okay. And then does this, you talked about the fact that you, um, it was, you went out to bid for the general, the out-of-district and the in-district special ed. So what happens with those other two?
So those other two, because, um, the, the information that we received in, there were certain qualifications that we had with insurance and just other parameters in the bid. The respondents did not meet all of those parameters.
Okay.
And so we will reject those bids, we're not, um, We're not recommending that we accept any of those bids. And then we can, because special education transportation is exempt from thirty B procurement law, we can continue to, what we do now is we kind of contract with individual vendors on an as-needed basis. We can continue to do that. And that's what we're planning on doing in the future. I think this was a good opportunity for us, though, to just, in soliciting multiple bids, it is ensuring that we're just trying to stay competitive in the market. Special education transportation, the cost has increased and that has been one of the budget areas that I know we've talked about a lot. And many other communities are struggling with that as well. And so I thought, you know, when we were looking kind of at transportation services, it was just an important step in the process, just to say, okay, we're being mindful, we're looking at this, we're trying to get the best price, so.
And with the reduction, and just to kind of clarify, with the reduction of that one bus, are we gonna be kind of trying to figure out routes again so that we're not leaving all the students that were on that route and just kind of balancing it out? Okay.
So we should go through that process. And it stays pretty similar year after year, but I think that there's just, there's definitely an opportunity every year to try to see if there's any efficiencies, if there's any changes that we could potentially make, even in just looking at kind of like.
The ridership too, right?
Right.
Like how many students actually?
The ridership's going to change. Some of the buses that we had, because we, it's a three-tiered system and it's too late to go into the, into too many of the details, but some of our buses were only potentially picking up that middle school, high school, and then servicing one of the elementary schools instead of servicing the two elementary schools, because we do three tiers. So just looking at if there's any opportunity for us to modify routes to be able to capture more capacity when they're only running the two tiers. So I think that's all, that's all work that we'll have to do with the transportation company over the summer.
And has there been any like data, just in the past year of like kids who do sign up for the bus? Do they, like, do they ride it to and from school five days a week? Like, is that, like, you know, just to see, like, even if we could give someone a spot for like two days a week? I don't know, like, just something, I know it's hard because it changes, but it's just.
I think the fluctuations, and you see the fluctuations at every level. We definitely have, because we have specific times where we see ridership tick up so that we do have to say to the bus company, we need you to do bus counts because one day we may have thirty kids on the bus and the next day we have fifty-five kids trying to ride the bus. So just making sure that they're doing those bus counts. But it does fluctuate so widely that, but just trying to make sure that the drivers know all of the students that are riding their bus and that it's like building that relationship. In addition to providing the transportation.
As part of the bid, was, first, just within Milton, have we been happy with customer service, logistics, on-time, and safety? And beyond, beyond our district? As First Student, like, do we, do we look at First Student's performance on those, on those factors? Was that part of the bid analysis?
So they provide a number of different contexts that we can reach out to just to talk and ask them, like, a number of different references, so we can just talk about performance. I think this year, there are a number of factors in Milton that make yellow bus transportation tricky, from what I've seen. And it varies from here to other districts. I think the traffic is one of the issues that we run into. And then we have very short, there's a very short time period between dismissals of the schools. So when we're, we have, we're trying to fill our buses to capacity, but the drivers only have twenty-three minutes to complete a route with sixty kids on it. So, so there's a couple of different things that I think, there's some pain points that I think we need to look at and address with the bus company that I've seen over the year. But I think that we can do that collaboratively and I think First Student is, is one of the biggest vendors. So they definitely have some capacity to be able to, to do some of that work with us. I know I've worked with some other smaller vendors and I think First Student does a pretty good job, so, yeah. I think there's also, and I won't, I just wanted to add this as, I think as a part of the legislature at the state level, there's a small pocket of funding looking at school bus transportation because it's not, First Student does have a big hold on the market. And so I'm sure that there's gonna be some work done at the state level, just kind of looking at that, looking at some of the transportation pricing and kind of the bid process. And, and so I'm sure that there'll be more information to share in the future. But for tonight.
We're, it's the three-year contract, so even if something like that were to come to pass, that, would that not affect our contract?
It wouldn't affect our contract now, but I think, and I, I think that was just more seed money to start the conversation, so I would imagine it would take a period of time, so. But I think it's just good that it's something that is kind of rising to the level of, we can't be, we can't all just be complacent in saying there's only one vendor.
Yeah, I just, I mean, thirteen percent, it's crazy. You mean one vendor is great. Transportation is so expensive and so hard to get folks to bid. I know there aren't a lot of companies that just have eleven buses sitting around that are not being utilized, which is why it's hard to get bids. But even if you look at the out years, right, we're talking about five percent, their, like, baseline is a five percent increase. Like, that is obviously, just to flag for folks, it's more than the two and a half, right, pop two and a half restriction. That is like their baseline. And in the out years, you're four and five, the optional, it's up to six percent. So it is, you know, it's nice to have that consistency for long-term budget planning and that will be helpful, but it's still frustrating that we weren't able to get stronger competition, any, any competition to, to help drive down rates. And so it'd be great if the state does something.
So we need a vote. So we, are we voting to award the regular education transportation contract to First Student?
The bid.
The bid?
Awarding the bid.
Awarding the bid, okay. So I'll make the motion, I move to award the bid, the regular education transportation bid to First Student.
For a three-year transportation contract?
Oh, for three-year.
With the Milton Public Schools.
Do I need to address that? So we're moving to award the bid of the regular education transportation contract for three years to, for the Milton Public Schools. Correct. Do a second.
Second.
All in favor? Mark's giving me the eye like I set her on.
The motion, the motion language is accept the bid, but I think award the bid, accept the bid is.
I think it's either one of them.
Okay, yeah. All right, so the motion carries. All right. Policy.
So policy is a very concise meeting. We, the two policies, we met actually on Monday. We briefly talked about the French immersion policy and we decided to bring it back to our meeting on June, I think, sorry, for June sixteenth, when John is back, actually. And bring him back to our meeting, school committee meeting then.
Maybe on the eighteenth.
On the eighteenth? I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
So we were gonna start the discussion there. I don't know, what we decided to do was look at the policy maybe as holistically and just kind of see what the other areas are looking at, some of the feedback that we've kind of received and see what other edits versus that. Initially, there was just one language change that we were looking at, but then Regina mentioned some concerns around incorporating that. So just kind of having the broader discussion once Superintendent Phelan is in, in the mix as well and just kind of looking at it. We also, you know, talked about discussing it at governance a little bit in terms of that as well and how do we kind of, kind of look at that, you know, policy and see what, what kind of edits we can make and what we, you know, what makes sense for us in terms of policies overall. And then in terms of the calendar policy, we added some language. We are going to bring that policy to the full school committee for our first reading on June fourth. And then that was really it. So it was just, we had put some initial language. We're just kind of gonna have it ready for the next meeting to discuss. So it was a pretty short meeting. And then I think also, like, as we talked about, you know, once we have some of those conversations around French immersion, we can kind of incorporate that language into that French immersion policy and kind of weigh the pros and cons of what, what the edits are. Sorry, I'm so tired. And then I can go right into facilities if you want. So facilities, we met on Monday as well. We did have, we did not have Tom at the meeting, so we didn't really do a facilities, consolidated facilities director update. He typically provides kind of what's been going on, like, the kind of changes that they've made, like, you know, like, maintenance staff across any, all the six school buildings. He was not there. But what I did have, I had a member from the community who's also part of the climate action committee, reached out about being involved in the HVAC update process. So just kind of, you know, as we talk about making, going green and just looking at efficiencies, he wanted to be involved in that conversation. So which kind of led to a discussion of, you know, we talked about briefly adding new members to that committee. So that committee is an advisory committee that has members from the community. I think we currently have four members. We used to have five, then two school committee members. We have the consolidated facilities director, Regina was in the last one. And we previously had superintendents on there. So what our process would be to have community members join that. And that's probably something we might wanna put on the governance, just so that we have a formal process in reaffirming members every year to do. So we might wanna talk about that at governance in terms of what the protocol is and so, and seeing, you know, if people are interested in joining and what that kind of process. Anyway, then we briefly talked about the outdoor learning space, learning and open space improvements. What we decided to do with that was kind of also wait for John, John to come in and just kind of revisit that probably in September. I think he will be actually at our June meeting, but then revisit in September. A couple of years ago, when we started looking at short-term space across all six buildings, what we did was, we did a tour of all, of our six schools with the entire facilities committee, which was great. We drove around from school to school and looked at all the space. Had a great field trip, that was a fun one.
Pizza lunch?
And the pizza lunch, yes, yes, I did hear, that was really fun. It was probably one of the highlight of, you know, our facilities committee going on a field trip. So we want to kind of do the same thing with the outdoor space as well. Look at each of the outdoor spaces and see what we can do and just kind of make it equitable across all the schools. That was the big thing. I know right now, some, some schools have put plans forward that we've seen here, but I know Tucker is in the process of putting in their plan. So really just being able to make sure that everybody has, you know, it's, it's more equitable across all the schools, so. And then we did, as, as you saw at town meeting, that we did briefly just kind of update that. I shared with the document that was sent, that Amanda, you had shared with the bidding, bids that we had gotten and the bids that we decided to go, go with for the third and fourth floor renovation of Cunningham and Collycut. So it came under, which was really nice. Came in at about three-point-three million, so below the five-point-five million that was appropriated. So which, next, next meeting when Tom is back, I said, you know, members have an opportunity to ask any questions or their concerns or whatever they have around it. But just kind of keeping that process going. And so, yeah, that's kind of where we are. So hopefully, I would like to give them an update on what we decide about adding new members across our advisory committees.
It's a lively group.
It is, it's a very fun committee to be on.
You're doing a nice job.
I don't know if Mark and I wanna leave that committee.
All right, the last thing, I don't know if I saw the minutes in the folder.
It is.
Is it?
Yeah, April thirtieth.
Okay, I looked at them. I saw, I looked at them, but I didn't see them in the folder. So has everybody had a chance to review? Okay. So do we have a motion to, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of the April thirtieth meeting, school committee meeting?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Yes, we're approved. Do we review the next, so reviewing the next meeting agenda items, so contract approvals will be at that meeting. We'll talk about the subcommittee assignments, policy for the first reading of the calendar policy. Sorry, is that you? Sorry. And then if we want to add on, I don't know if we wanna talk about, call it, if we wanted to have the French immersion discussion or the, I'm just trying to determine if it's like, because there were two topics. But I think that did come up as something of interest to talk about around French immersion. So if we have, if we wanna reach out and if there is like a presentation on it, if we wanna have a discussion around it, if there are other things that maybe we can put that in, just as that, as a placeholder and then get, and then depending on what information people are interested in getting, you know, like that, then that would kind of inform more the direction of the conversation. That makes sense? So I know based, you know, at a minimum, we were talking about like, talking about what is the program maybe having come in there, so presentation around it. But then if there's additional information around that, that we're looking at having, if we wanna just show that, and that would probably inform the agenda. Does that make sense? So like, what's the scope of the presentation? Or what's the scope of the conversation?
Yeah, no, I think so, I mean.
Do you want us to email you on that? My sense would be, it's a broad conversation on like the, the program, but then more specifically like a presentation on like the enrollment numbers, which seem to be the point of concern from the community around like how, you know, what are the enrollment numbers? I think you sent us a document by being able to talk about that at the open meeting around, here was the waitlist numbers, the number of enrollments, how that compares to past years, what decisions that were made and, you know, why, just to lay that out for the community members in general.
That would be helpful. And I think also just, you know, in the past, when we've moved classes from And I think also just, you know, in the past, when we've moved classes from one school to another like that, you know, the, the two, like, for instance, like, Collycott having two this year versus one last year, like, what are, have you noticed, kind of looking at it from a data standpoint, have you noticed change in number of students that have participated in the following year when it went from two, two classes to one, you know, and things like that? Just to see what they kind of, like, what the impacts of, like, the decisions that we have to make based on various restrictions. So it would be interesting to kind of understand data from that standpoint and also really understanding what it is. And like, you know, I, I mean, I know when Zeno was at our policy meeting, she shared like a very interesting overview and I think would be great for all of us to understand. And what I would like to see too is, as I mentioned earlier, is just kind of looking at both our programs that we offer and just making them both equally robust so that, you know, they're not, and they can kind of coexist together and collaborate and learn from each other, so, yeah, and share our best practices.
And you said in the policy subcommittee that you all are working on it, doing something with the French, some sort of policy related to the program?
It is the program assignment policy that we have and we kind of have, what we were originally looking at is making a word change or change in language to incorporate students that aren't enrolled in multi-public schools for kindergarten or enrolled in a private kindergarten and if they can be part of the lottery. But we figured that it would be better, after Regina had a conversation with John, that we, you know, kind of look at that a little, you know, weight on it and include him in the conversation. But then it also, I think, as we're having all these other discussions and concerns, maybe we should look at the language overall and just kind of, you know, does it, are there things that we need to address in that policy that, you know, might have changed since it was last written, right? Based on like, based on the concerns families have brought in, like, what can we tighten up, what can we do better? Just, just kind of revisiting that, so.
So I would imagine this is going to be a, like, a longer process in the standpoint of, like, the initial thing is the discussion and the presentation, and then, I think, then the policy.
And I think also, like, you know, to kind of figure out what happens next year, right? Like, if we're, if we're at five classes this year and if there is, in terms of enrollment, the number comes up higher, you know, what is our ability to add an extra class next year, you know, and need, if we needed to go up to six and so on and so forth? And I think that's where it would be helpful to kind of have that initial discussion, work it out through policy in this, over the course of the next several months when we regroup in September and then go from there for the following year and just kind of be more prepared in terms of.
I, I do think it makes sense to think of this as, in just managing expectations for ourselves, but also for the community, to think of it as an initial discussion that touches upon these data points that have emerged as like, with urgent questions from the community. For, for June fourth, especially because I'm also just thinking about, you know, John will have been on the job for two days.
Right.
That will be his first meeting as our interim superintendent, so I'd also just like to, like, I think it's also awareness about that. It's a good initial discussion, it's a very important topic. He also does have good historical knowledge that he can bring to the conversation as well, which is really great. And what we're really talking about is a lot of like larger, longer-term decisions that will be made driving towards next year as well, so. Like a presentation for sure, but I, I just, and maybe if Zena can be involved, that would be great, but, and she may or may not be available, but.
I will check.
But not, not necessarily like a soup to nuts French immersion.
No, absolutely not, yeah. But like, just definitely talking about some of the things so that we can start that, you know, and if there are things that we can address for the future, let's, I think, like, let's all get on the same page of, you know, all of us having a better understanding of it, I think, would be helpful.
Only other thing I'd like to raise is a point of, I don't know when we bring it up, but it just would be the high school courses study graduation requirements. I know when we last talked about that, when Karen came, the conversation, when I asked her, like, what, what is the timeline in which we need to have this conversation? I think that timeline was like before the end of the, we need to start that before the end of the school year, in order to inform any future year. And so again, I know the timing's awkward with a new superintendent coming on, but just flagging that as a point of interest at least for me personally.
Like the new, the board of ed just came down with their new guidelines around that, like yesterday, I think, or did before, so.
All right. All right, so, then, so.
Oh, well, I was just going to speak to the executive.
Yes, yes.
That's what I was going to say. Well, I was just going to say, I think it could be valuable to have a very brief, not lengthy, executive session, just to get everyone up to speed. But in saying, I still hope we can do that, I'm saying, let's keep it very short, because I know I'm slightly, but whenever we're ready, I, I can.
I wrote up the motion.
Yeah, the motion is, well, do you want to?
Are we ready to do that?
Yep. And, yeah.
Sure, motion is made to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with APSME and MEA units B and E, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee as declared by the chair, and that the committee will adjourn directly from executive session and not return to open meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Awesome.